Okay, good evening, everyone. Thanks for your patience. And I call the meeting to order, the May 25th regular City Council meeting. Madam Clerk?
The record rule reflect all members of council are present.
Okay, and then we have an invocation. Is Pastor Drew Smithson here? Please, sir.
An honor to be here with you tonight. Let's pray. Thank you, Jesus, for these leaders that are willing to serve our community. We honor them. And, Lord, I pray that you will give them wisdom, as your half-brother James said, "When we lack wisdom to ask," and you will give us wisdom, not just a little bit, but more than enough. Lord, I would ask that you would give them compassion once again, because there's so many needs and issues in this city. Lord, I would ask you that you give them justice and righteousness and mercy, too. We make a commitment to pray for our leaders, not only tonight, but in the coming days as well. We ask this in the mighty name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Mr. Muldoon will lead us in the pledge.
Yes, please place your right hand over your heart. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Harp?
Yes, I think we're going to make a couple of quick adjustments to the calendar this evening. So there's not a need to meet regarding the closed session item, which was conference with labor negotiators, so we'll be taking that off calendar this evening. And I spoke to the mayor, and he would like to move study session item number two to the end of the meeting if the rest of the council concurs in that. No objections. All right, and then there wouldn't be a need for clarification of items on consent calendar, because we're going to get to that in just a minute. And then, final piece is, I know there's a lot of people here for public comments on agenda and non-agenda items, so the mayor would like to go ahead and just take those comments now at the beginning.
Thank you.
Okay.
So please come forward if you have public comments on agenda or non-agenda items.
If you're here to talk about the restaurants, this is your chance.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dave Tanner. I'm here tonight with a recommendation for you
If you can speak closer to the mic, please, Mr. Tanner. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm here tonight with a recommendation for the council for the city
I don't know if it's on.
Is it? Is the green light on? No. Try to touch it, it'll go on. Bottom, at the bottom. There you go. Is that better?
Yep.
Oh, okay. I'm here tonight with a recommendation for the council for the city to help the city deal with the general plan update and some of the pending projects. As we all know, the city of Newport Beach is under tremendous pressure from the state to conform to new housing laws and environmental legislation. The state legislation has the potential to dramatically change the way of life in Newport Beach. So normally, the city would have decades to work through these problems, but we don't. We have a very short timeframe. So what I would like to do is, I would like to ask the city council to hold public workshops at your city council hearings, maybe at four o'clock, something like that, where the public would be involved, and we would pick a topic. And we have a series of these workshops, so that you could hear firsthand from the public, you could hear from staff, and you could provide direction at that time to staff on how you would like them to look at some of these issues. And I'd like to propose that the first topic, one that I think is very difficult, none of these are going to be easy, is the future of the city's master plan of Arturo highways, in particular, the Mariners Mile. We have two projects pending. One of them's going to be coming before you soon, and I think it would be very nice to have clarification as to what, if anything, the city can do about the Caltrans highway. We get Measure M funds, and in order to get Measure M funds, we have committed to comply with the Orange County Master Plan of Arturo highways. So what can we do? I think an informed public and informed decision-maker can chart a better course for this city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm George Milutinovich. I want to thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. I'm here to speak to a proposed transfer of a liquor license to the address of 103 Palm Street in Newport Beach, which is by the end of the parking lot by the Balboa Pier. It's in a mixed-use building, and according to the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control Census Track Map, number 625, the recommendation is for five on-sale and two off-sale liquor licenses. Right now, in that district, or in that track map, we have 33 licenses already. Within six blocks of Balboa Village, there's 14 licenses. So we're inundated with it. The proposed transfer going to this location is the access into the parking lot, right into the Balboa parking lot. Every car that enters there to park their cars or to go to the beach would have to go by this particular location. And it is already a nightmare during the season getting in and out of that lot, and for, really for safety reasons, whenever an ambulance or fire department has had to enter the parking lot, it's been an issue already without allowing a liquor store and an on-sale beer and wine location to where people can sit and drink. And the proximity to the beach, it's right there. It steps off the beach, which will add to the dilemma that I heard you speaking to earlier tonight about the trash on the beach. It really is no purpose for it to be there, so I'm hoping that we can, with your support, will not allow this transfer to happen. There's police issues, a lot of beer, wine, alcohol issues on the beach, trash issues that need to be addressed. Allowing businesses on the peninsula there who have struggled with COVID and decreased members or visitors coming there, it's been difficult for them already, and by allowing a transfer into the area, it would just further dilute already struggling businesses and people who've worked long and hard to be there. I was 40 years in the restaurant business and am retired now, so I am fully compassionate to business needs and everything, but I think enough's enough. We have enough bars and on-sale and off-sale liquor establishments in the Balboa Village. Used to be a very, very family-friendly area. Unfortunately, not so much anymore, so I'm hoping we can turn to you to help us return to that that we used to have. Thank you for your time. I'm very appreciative.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, I'm Kathy Milutinovich, wife of George, and our home is 600 East Oceanfront, directly the street of Palm. The proposed license is directly across the street from our home. We live on the third floor at the Rondebo complex. There's 24 units. So it is tough for you, I know your job, because it is mixed use. But having this business so close to our homes, the noise, the trash, we already have to put up with over-served patrons leaving the bars two o'clock, they urinate outside, they're arguing, there's bad language. The police already have trouble getting the fire pits closed up at 10:00. We watch them from our little balcony every night. It used to be that was family-friendly. We have 12 grandchildren. We love the carousel. We love the Fun Zone, and I'm sure it was important in all of your lives with your children, grandchildren, and growing up in this area. So we just hope that you'll help us get the family-friendly back at Balboa Village and Balboa Fun Zone. We would really appreciate you to take some time and go walk our area and see how many licenses are already there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. This is my first time being here. If I make any mistake, please forgive me. My name is Harpith Garewa, and I own Liquor Store right at 510 East Balboa, where they have an other liquor license applied for. It's only 280 feet away from my business, and I'm there for 23 years. First 10 years, we have Balboa Market right next to us, and we both were struggling for making a good living out of it. But after 10 years, they got closed, and we're doing running nice and clean business for 23 years, me and my wife and our whole family. We working hard to make any needs, you know, done, and we never have day off, we never have vacations, because we have to keep running that nice, clean business. So if there's any other business comes right 280 feet, it's going to kill our business and put me out of business. So I want you guys to consider if I can stay in business, just because of you guys. Thank you.
You.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Avery. My name is Carlos Codinez. I'm the president of the Newport Beach Restaurant Association and the general manager at Tavern House Kitchen and Bar. On behalf of my owners, my employees, and the board of the Restaurant Association, I'm asking you to consider reinstating the Newport Beach Restaurant Association bid for one more year. We're a goals-driven and research-driven organization that returns significant economic impact back to the city through the public and private partnership. Under my tenure as board president and with the leadership of Newport Beach Restaurant and Company, the city of Newport Beach receives nearly 20 times the annual return on investment from every private dollar we put into the bid, which equals nearly $3.9 million of economic impact to the city. With the pandemic still in our rearview mirrors, this is not the time to pull the rug out from under our restaurant recovery efforts. The NBRA is pro-business, and we ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, good evening. My name is Thad Foray. I'm a former NBRA bid board member, excuse me, bid board member and owner of Freddie's in Corona del Mar. As a small business owner, I rely on the NBRA bid to market my restaurant. My small annual assessment allows me to feel like I'm participating in big incentives in getting a return on my money, on money that I don't have to spend. This is the worst possible time to dissolve the NBRA bid. We are just now recovering from one of the worst years for restaurants, and I need the resources from the NBRA bid to help me bring diners into my new restaurant. Along with the shortage in labor and rising prices, it's a tough time for us right now. So as Carlos said, the NBRA is pro-business. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor Avery and members of council. My name is Peggy Fort, and I am a resident of the Balboa Peninsula, as well as a Newport Beach business owner. My firm, CMC Inc., represents a number of Newport Beach restaurants. Back in 1996, early in my career, I had a unique opportunity to work underneath one of my mentors and boss at the time from the Newport Beach Conference and Visitors Bureau, Rosalynn Williams. With support and leadership from Mayor Jan DeBay, Councilman Tom Edwards, and later Mayor Jenny O'Neil, we worked alongside many Newport Beach restaurateurs, including David Salisbury, who is here, owner of Newport Landing and Harborside Restaurant, and the late Dan Marciano from the Arches Restaurant, to form what is now the Newport Beach Restaurant Association Business Improvement District. For over 13 years, my marketing firm then had the pleasure of representing the NBRA bid to launch numerous city and statewide hospitality industry marketing initiatives with over 25 years of longtime collaboration and support of the Newport Beach City Council, restaurant owners, mutually beneficial partners, and numerous stakeholders, many of which are here tonight, including Visit Newport Beach, the Newport Beach Chamber, Hoag Hospital, The Irvine Company, The Walt Disney Company, the Anaheim CBB, Open Table, and the California Restaurant Association, to name a few. Strategic digital marketing campaigns, cooperative media advertising, public relations campaigns, charity campaigns, and events such as the Chef's Cooking Pavilion at the Taste of Newport, Hoag Heart Health Awareness Month, and of course, Newport Beach Restaurant Week, all helped to build the Newport Beach brand for tourism and residents alike, and put Newport Beach's name on the map as a much sought-after culinary destination. During my tenure with the NBRA bid, the association grew to become a respected industry leader, and I was asked numerous times to speak on the success of the City of Newport Beach Restaurant Association bid at the state level. NBRA bid cooperative marketing efforts and industry programming created cohesive industry platform to generate incremental revenue for restaurants, as well as support economic development through increased sales revenues, which go to the city's general fund. With this unprecedented year we have all had in 2020, which was particularly challenging for small business and competitive restaurant industry owners, now more than ever is not a time to recognize, or is a time to recognize the power of collaboration and support the cooperative marketing efforts of the Newport Beach Restaurant Association Business Improvement District. Thank you very much for your time.
You.
Good evening, Mayor Avery and city council members. My name is Philip Crowley, and along with my wife Linda, I'm the owner of Modo Mio Rustic Italian Kitchen in Crystal Cove, and here to address the Newport restaurant bid situation. As treasurer the last several years of the board, I can tell you from my perspective that it has been very financially worthwhile to both the city and to the restaurants. I think we have worked collaboratively with the city and with the individual businesses, have been successful in doing that, and if I could ask you anything tonight, I think it would be to reconsider your vote with particular consideration to at least an extension. We have a tremendous amount of organizational expertise that we've built up, and I'm reminded of, you know, the business term, the flywheel. It took a long time to get this thing in motion and functioning as well as it is today. And I understand that, you know, like to nudge us in another direction, and I'm happy to consider that. Would just like to have the time and the benefit of the organization that's been developed to be able to do that successfully, as opposed to see it all, in effect, washed away and disintegrated with no real resource to get that going again. And so I think that an opportunity to extend it by at least one year would give us an opportunity to probably address that. So thank you for your time and attention and allowing me to make the comments.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and city council. My name is David Salisbury. I own, excuse me, I own Newport Landing and Harborside Restaurant. I was president of the association for, can't remember exactly, but at least 10 or 12 years. I really supported the association because I felt it was really beneficial to all the 400 restaurants at that time when we had them. I gave a lot of my effort and time, and I heard that the association may go away. I think it would be a mistake. I think it would at least give us another year to reconsider what, please give us another year, reconsider what we can do. It's been tough enough this last year or so on us restaurants, and I just want to come and bid my support for, hopefully you guys will consider keeping it for another year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Greer. I'm the GM of the Bungalow Restaurant. I've worked in Corona del Mar since 2005. Started Rothschilds Landmark and Five Crowns now, obviously, a bungalow. So I've seen what the Restaurant Association does for these small businesses and these small restaurants that don't have the capabilities like these larger restaurants like Mastro's and Javier's, but I would just, you know, request that you guys give us another year to keep this going, and hopefully we can resolve some of these issues, and hopefully you guys will reconsider. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor Brad Avery and members of the city council. My name is Jim Walker. I am the current owner of the Bungalow Restaurant in Corona del Mar. I've been involved with the Newport Beach Restaurant Association for about 20 years. I was also involved with the CDM bid. During my tenure with the Restaurant Association, I've watched it grow and develop. I've watched us struggle, and many of us have put in hours and time because we believe and we know that it's been good for this community, for the restaurant community, and for businesses at large. What I've learned during that time is that our current membership is about 470 restaurants. During that time, and the times that I've been before you and previous generations of city councils, I've never encountered any complaints, any protest, anyone that's come forward that has been unhappy with the Restaurant Association. I've never encountered a city council that has never renewed our bid until now. I'm finding it really hard to understand why. Because in my tenure with the Newport Beach Restaurant Association and my interaction with previous city councils, we've had members of the city council come join us at our meetings, people like Steve Rosansky, Keith Curry, Ed Selich, Nancy Gardner. We welcomed them. We enjoyed them. We learned from them. We had an exchange with them. We listened to what their concerns were, and we reacted to that. We reacted to the concern that the city was not here to fund the Restaurant Association. We took action on that. We revised our bid structure. We eliminated people that we feel it was unfair to. We gave the small gas stations a free pass because we didn't feel it was fair for them to be assessed. We even took on the markets, which were unnecessarily assessed because the number of employees, and they were paying thousands of dollars a year. We reduced it. We leveled the playing field, and we put the onus of the bid fees on restaurants like mine, the Bungalow. Dinner house, full-service restaurants pay the majority of bid fees willingly. They're not forced, and if someone is unhappy with being in the bid, there's no ramification. Again, there's no ramification because we don't try and collect late fees. In fact, we eliminated late fees because restaurants like Bayside had over $7,000 of accumulated late fees, which we forgave. If someone is unhappy with our organization, they can simply drop out. They don't participate in Restaurant Week or the website that we've created, but over that course of time, we developed Restaurant Week. We were the first city in Newport Beach, or in Orange County, to have Restaurant Week. Restaurant Week, for your information, which you might know, has grown to be the second most income-producing revenue next to the Christmas Boat Parade. I implore you to give us the opportunity to work with you, visit us, come to our meetings, and let's have a genuine heartfelt exchange on keeping something that's been here for 25 years successfully. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Avery and fellow council members. I'm Steve Rosansky, President and CEO of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce. I'm actually glad to hear that the Boat Parade is still in number-one position, because we are going to have a Boat Parade this year, December 15th and 19th. But I'm not here to speak about that. I'm here to support the Restaurant Association. You know, my years as a city councilman, and now my eight years as a chamber president, I've found the Restaurant Association to be very effective in marketing the restaurant businesses here in town, marketing the city of Newport Beach. It contributes a huge amount to the general fund budget here through the sales tax revenue. I personally know that many of these restaurateurs are, have no problem donating food to charities, to organizations, to the city, to police department, fire department, even to our city employee appreciation lunch, which we have here annually as well. So these people are always giving back to the community. It's really the ideal public-private partnership. They're raising their own funds to support this city, to support the restaurants here in town, to support commerce and business, and I think you should, you know, give them your support, whether it's, you know, I understand that there may be a motion for reconsideration later in the meeting to reconsider your action at the last meeting. I do hope you vote favorably for that. If not, to at least renew, you know, renew the association, to at least consider giving them another year. It's, you know, it's been a tough year. I was, I've owned several restaurants myself. In the best of times, it's difficult to run a restaurant. No one knows that. I think you know that, too. I think you know these people that have walked up here, you know, you've met them over the years, you know they're good people. They're not here to do harm to the city. They only want to do good. They want to support their businesses, their staff, their employees, and their customers. And I would hope that you would see clear to give them at least another year to work out their situation. This past year was not the year to be working on moving from, you know, one type of bid to another. I mean, these people were just trying to get their doors open, trying to navigate, you know, closings, you know, delivery, pickup, outdoor, indoor. I mean, it's dizzying. So, you know, I think, you know, we're going to be on a smoother path going forward. I look forward to June 15th, I think, like all of you do, where we get rid of a lot of the hindrances to these restaurants and other businesses in town, and I would hope that you could see clear towards supporting them at least for one more year and allowing them to try and make the transition, if that's what you deem as, you know, appropriate. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Gary Sherwin. I'm the president and CEO of Newport Beach and Company, and we work at the behest of the Newport Beach Restaurant Association as their marketing agency. I want to concur with our restaurant colleagues that you've heard tonight about the tremendous challenges that they're certainly facing right now as they emerge from this pandemic. While eating out again is certainly increasing, financial difficulties remain from labor shortages, as you've heard of, increased food and operational costs, increased competition as more restaurants open up throughout Orange County and throughout Southern California. And of course, this is happening after a record year of horribleness for the industry overall. You know, I'd like to clarify the issue regarding the conversion of the restaurant bid from 1989 to the 1994 law, which, as I understand, is preferred by several of you. And I agree that the 94 law is preferable for many reasons. We currently operate the tourism bid under this law, and it's smooth and eliminates a lot of administrative friction. Last summer, I brought in a leading expert on this issue, John Lambeth from Civitas, to address the Restaurant Association and to explain what the conversion means. Of course, last summer, we were also dealing with the pandemic and civil unrest, as restaurants were desperately trying to keep their doors open. However, at our encouragement, the organization has agreed to start a strategic planning process that could begin the dialogue on the conversion, as well as several other issues. Before our last council meeting, a meeting was scheduled with City Attorney Aaron Harp, Terrifician of the City Manager's Office, Councilperson Dixon, and Mr. Lambeth to clearly define what the conversion process is, how it works, and how to proceed from both a discussion and funding standpoint. I thought it was a very productive session. I think we all have agreed on a real viable pathway to help make this happen. Should the bid continue for another year, we will encourage the association to pursue this conversion path. However, it is their decision, not ours, as to whether the conversion works for them and how it can best serve their needs. This is their assessment dollars, and we feel they should control it. My personal belief is that the 94 law could be more effective and could even improve their marketing and get even better results. I want you all to know that I have heard what you have said in previous years, and we've been working in good faith to address the issue with this group. I know many of you have attended launch events for Restaurant Week, when several of you served as mayors, and presented proclamations celebrating this successful collaboration to bring more business to the dining community. In fact, we did two Restaurant Weeks this last year, and even a Restaurant Month in the fall, and in the fall, we even did a drive-in event with media and social influencers because we wanted to stimulate business during a time when it was incredibly difficult for all of our restaurants. My understanding is that this Restaurant Association is the oldest in the United States. We think it's an important public-private partnership, and it is the only means for many restaurants, not all, because there are many that have marketing agencies, PR agencies, but it's the only means for them to help promote their business and be a successful small business in a community that's, quite frankly, very expensive to do business in. So I hope that you will renew this bid for another year, give them a chance to pursue the conversion, and help our small businesses which desperately need it right now. Thank you so much for your attention. define what the conversion process is, how it works, and how to proceed from both a discussion and funding standpoint. I thought it was a very productive session. I think we all have agreed on a real viable pathway to help make this happen. Should the bid continue for another year, we will encourage the Association to pursue this conversion path. However, it is their decision, not ours, as to whether the conversion works for them and how it can best serve their needs. This is their assessment dollars, and we feel they should control it. My personal belief is that the 94 law could be more effective and could even improve their marketing and get even better results. I want you all to know that I have heard what you have said in previous years, and we've been working in good faith to address the issue with this group. I know many of you have attended launch events for Restaurant Week, when several of you served as mayors, and presented proclamations celebrating this successful collaboration to bring more business to the dining community. In fact, we did two Restaurant Weeks this last year, and even a Restaurant Month in the fall. And in the fall, we even did a drive-in event with media and social influencers because we wanted to stimulate business during a time when it was incredibly difficult for all of our restaurants. My understanding is that this Restaurant Association is the oldest in the United States. We think it's an important public-private partnership, and it is the only means for many restaurants, not all, because there are many that have marketing agencies, PR agencies, but it's the only means for them to help promote their business and be a successful small business in a community that's, quite frankly, very expensive to do business in. So I hope that you will renew this bid for another year, give them a chance to pursue the conversion, and help our small businesses which desperately need it right now. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment on agenda or non-agenda items? Do we have any Zoom public comment?
This is Hoyt, and yep, again. I was not going to make a public comment tonight, but I just listened to these restaurant owners' public comments. So I hope what I'm going to say, that I'm not going to offend anybody. This is a really difficult situation. I came to council several times to speak on this issue, and I have always said the restaurant owners in town are very smart business owners. They work very hard. I am so touched by how hard they work, and it's such a part of the fabric in the city. But everyone knows, I think, that the Water Quality Committee has been working on single-use plastic reduction for five years now. In 2018, we came out with a restaurant flyer to reduce some of the single-use plastics served on requests and bring you on, and I went to Restaurant Association, everyone was smiling. Never got official support. So, but then, AB 1884, AB 619 was signed into law. If they supported, or if the city council supported, we could have got a good publicity for the restaurants. And now, this year, we have AB 1276 and AB 1200. So this is a really tough situation. I mean, we just talked about the trash costs, how much is it costing the city, right, during the study session? So can we, this is really not my decision, but I just hope that we can have a conversation, not just kicking a can down the road, not just smiling at me, and not just tell me I should stop talking about it. This is a real problem. We have a responsibility for our children, our grandchildren. Let's have a conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
You're taking all comments now, right?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor.
Are you speaking to a specific agenda item?
Yes.
Yeah. So we're, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I think they're asking if they're going to speak to the CAD issue.
Oh, we've got, CAD is on the agenda, so that would be the time to speak on that.
All right.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? All right, thank you.
I know we kind of skipped around here. The next item on the agenda we noticed to the public.
Madam Clerk.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Great, thank you. All right. Now's the time for council announcements and oral reports from council members on committee Councilmember Brenner, do you have any announcements or reports?
I do. I submitted a report from the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control to our city clerk to be included in our records, talking about the activity in Newport Beach. And this is a really nice change for me tonight. I get to report on some things that are all positive and really made me feel like we were starting to get back to some semblance of normal in our community. So the first activity I wanted to report on was that the Corona Del Mar Residents' Association invited the CEO of Mother's Market to come and speak to us, and she talked about what the plans are for the old Smart &amp; Final and the new Mother's Market. And I want to report, because so many people have asked me, yes, they're going to change the color of the building, so everybody's pretty excited about that. But we had almost 100 people on the Zoom call that morning, and then they distributed goodie bags at the location in the parking lot afterwards, and it was just a real neat, positive, uplifting feeling. And then, the second thing I wanted to report on was that over the last few months, I have been in almost constant contact with our Lieutenant Damon Soros, who is our traffic, the person responsible for traffic in Newport Beach. He's not responsible for traffic, he's responsible for our traffic ordinances. And he called me a few weeks ago and told me that we were getting ready to do another, what I call sting operation. But on Sunday, I went down and I got to ride along with Lieutenant Ryan Peters, and I was at Marina Park when they kicked off our latest sting operation, and we had, John, do you know how many officers were there? We had hundreds of officers there, and it was so exciting to be in their presence, motorcycle officers. I'm going to read to you what they said about it, so you know exactly. On Sunday, May 23rd, a joint enforcement operation utilizing over 50 motorcycle officers and other police officers from the Newport Beach Police Department, Seal Beach Police Department, Huntington Beach Police Department, Laguna Beach Police Department, Irvine Police Department, Santa Ana Police Department, Orange County Sheriff's Department, Cities of Dana Point and San Clemente, California Highway Patrol, Santa Ana and Westminster Offices, as well as four investigators from the California Department of Motor Vehicles, and four referees from the California Bureau of Automotive Repair, BAR. They participated in an enforcement effort along the entire length of coastal Orange County, as well as freeway and arterial access points to the coast. Because of this successful joint operation, 445 vehicles were stopped for violations, 348 vehicles were cited for vehicle code violations, which includes loud and modified exhaust. Forty-four vehicles were inspected onsite for modified exhaust violations by a BAR referee. Sixteen vehicles were referred to onsite DMV investigators for possible registration violations. Four vehicles were cited for exceeding 100 miles per hour. Four vehicles were stopped, and the drivers, passengers, or passengers were arrested for two possession and sale of narcotics, one unlicensed driver and one DUI. Getting to ride along and watch these officers in doing their duty and just so polite and considerate of everyone, but really enforcing upon them the importance of what we were doing was, it was just one of the most exciting things I've been part of. And I rode along with Lieutenant Ryan Peters, who is in charge of our SWAT team, and he told me at the time that they were doing a SWAT training exercise the next day on Monday, just a half block from my house on Marigold, and invited me to come over and witness that. This was really interesting, because as we were standing there, this is the little blue house that is getting ready to be demolished because the people are going to build a new home on that site. And this is Bob and Kathy that we're standing with. They were contacted by their contractor and told that we are very appreciative in Newport Beach of people who will allow us to do training exercises in locations where it's being demolished because it allows our officers to train in conditions similar to what they might be in in our city. Sometimes, Ryan was telling me that sometimes they will go, they'll have the opportunity to do this out of town, but the conditions are completely different from the sort of circumstances that they experience when they're here in Newport Beach. And, you know, we have some houses that are very close together, and so there are a lot of circumstances that it really helps them to train in our local area. So I wanted to announce this because I wanted people to know that if you're getting ready to tear down a house or have another property that is going to be demolished, please contact our police department. We are very appreciative of having the opportunities to train in these locations. And I had, oh, here we go. I had one other. I need to read an email A1 request. I spoke with Grace about this, and I would like to A1 an item to direct, for the council to direct the Parks, Species, and Recreation Commission to agendize an Ocean Boulevard Bluff Walk presentation from the resident community group who proposes to enhance the walkways and viewpoints with an emphasis on the pedestrian experience. And I'd like to A1 that for a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Neill.
I just want to say real quickly to our Recreation Senior Services staff, thank you so much for getting the fields back open. We just had our last weekend of soccer and baseball, and my family and a lot of other families, and it was a really big deal to be able to get through that season, so thank you. I was also able to attend the Corona Del Mar High School Theater Performance, the last one for a lot of the seniors there as well. And then I was able to host some Boy Scout troop of first graders, seven of them, so they actually all sat up here and gave me their ideas on how to improve the city. So I'll A1 all of their ideas. It was, anyway, it was a lot of fun. And then we have a Finance Committee meeting Thursday at 3:00 PM. We'll be discussing, the main thrust of the purpose of the Finance Committee is to make recommendations to the City Council on the budget. We had a budget discussion earlier with a joint meeting of the Finance Committee. We will be having the meeting to discuss the recommendations from the Finance Committee to the City Council Thursday at 3:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I have a couple of slides. Hold those up. So the mayor and I went over to West Newport to observe our sound, what's it called, sound wall replacement project that's underway. We're all familiar with these transparent glass, plexiglass fencing all along PCH in West Newport, and it's a project done jointly, collaboratively, between Public Works and the Utility Department. And so this has been a capital item that had been budgeted in last year's budget, I believe, and it's now being installed, and now people can look out of, from the park that we're standing there, can look out to the street and look, and just see something instead of kind of the marked-up glass. So very pleased to see our Public Works and Utilities staffs working, doing great things to keep our community looking good. Next, I have a slide, I have a virtual town hall. Hopefully, it's my last virtual town hall, won't be my last town hall, Thursday, June 17th, 5:00 to 6:30. And the normal, usual cast of characters on the agenda, public safety, community development activities in District One, Harbor Department activities, and Public Works updates. So please register, newportbeachca.gov/districttownhall. And then as far as my activities the last few weeks, the mayor and the city manager and staff, we had a Zoom meeting with the supervisor Foley on airport matters, John Wayne Airport Matters. That was productive, just to, our first meeting with her on airport matters. Speaking of airport, the Aviation Committee met last Monday, and the committee is working productively, and the ad hoc committees are working very productively. So we're addressing key targeted objectives and reporting on them, and the committee members are all actively involved. So I am very pleased, and hope that Councilmember Blom is pleased as well. I'll leave it to the mayor to talk about, are you going to talk about the Army Corps of Engineers here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll let you do that. And then today, just a thank you to our Senior Services and Recreation Department for a wonderful event at Grand Howard Park today on the reopening of that park after a beautiful retrofit. Again, another joint collaborative project with city staff, Public Works, Parks, Recreation, et cetera. So it was really a great day. I'll let the mayor speak more of that. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Blom.
I have nothing to add.
Thank you. Mr. Duffield.
Since we're way off our timeline, I would like to announce, but I'll wait till our next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Protem.
I'm not. I've got a couple of things. We'll start out with the fun stuff. So thanks to a lot of work by Councilmember Duffield and all the council, but we're finally moving toward getting the harbor dredged, and so these photos were taken, was it yesterday? Of the dredging at the harbor entrance. And this bucket picks up nine to 10 cubic yards, which is much more than a pickup truck. It's, I think a dump truck's 10 cubic yards. So we got the tour out there, it was really, really eye-opening. But this particular, you know, the harbor was open in 1936, big parade of boats came in, and that's when the jetties were finished, they were completed, and that really made the harbor accessible, safely accessible, to private yachts and commercial boats and that kind of thing. So this, now, on the east beach and on Big Corona, they got a huge amount of four-ton rocks and larger to go in on that east jetty, which is in need of more protection from the elements. As many people know, the swell tends to roll down that side of the jetty. And so we're, we just got a tour of the contractor, and the Army Corps was all out there. We had the Colonel down from the local Army Corps office, and she was very, very nice and very focused on safety. This is all kind of dangerous, dangerous equipment, if you're not watching it, and they do a lot of work around the country, and they work hard to try and keep all their folks safe. But it's, it's just a wonderful thing that we're able to do this. I won't go into more detail, except to say that between the jetty improvements and safeguarding and the dredging, it's going to really help our harbor in so many ways environmentally, and it'll protect all that side, on the east side, where there's so much shoaling going on. That's all cleaned up, and so it provides safe navigation. And when it's finished, through the main federal channel, and hopefully up lead-to-reach, the harbor will be dredged quite a bit deeper than it is now, and it should last for a long, long time, in terms of the bottom staying deep enough to accommodate virtually all the boats in the harbor. And there's another slides, another group of slides? Or is that it? Oh, great. Well, this is this morning at Grand Howard Park. In Grand Howard Park, for those of you, it's sort of hidden away in Corona Del Mar, obviously known to everybody in Corona Del Mar, but for those of us on the other side of town, it's, you know, it's not easily found in some respects. But it's a 3.1-acre site that Grant Howard worked with the Irvine Company in the, in the late '50s, and that, he got the site eventually through just dogged termination, transferred to the city in 1972. But prior to that, he established a youth center on this site and established it as a park, and then took many years to really get it into the fabric of the city. And so just recently, there's been a project that's run about nine months, and it was a collaboration between various departments in the city, particularly the Public Works and Utilities, to totally renovate the park, reimagine it, make it much more kid-friendly, make it safer. It included lighting in the adjacent neighborhood, and many, all new, many new trees and plants and shrubs, and it's much more of a, sort of an active park, if you will, and it's a tremendous asset in the city, and I hope more people find out about it. And if you've got grandchildren or kids, this is a great place to go spend, spend an afternoon, that's for sure. Really well done. So it was, I think, one of the more positive sides to the job of being on council is opening a great public space like this that's so well-improved and dedicated to the use by all residents and visitors. And I also attended the Finance Committee meeting, as Mr. O'Neill mentioned, and homeless ad hoc, and I'm on the board of the Orange County Sanitation District, representing the city, and I attended the Administration Committee meeting as well. So thank you, Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 15. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. be enacted by one motion in form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommended in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action. If you would like to speak using Zoom, please raise your hand by using the hand button or star nine on your phone.
Thank you. Councilmember Brenner, do you have any items to pull from the consent calendar or conflicts to announce related to items number 1 through 16? Councilmember O'Neill.
Lodge a no vote on number 3.
Councilmember Dixon.
I have a question on item number 7, on the travel policy. Is this something, I didn't know that, why it needed to be, the scope needed to be enlarged? Has there been an issue or something?
No, it was really just a cleanup item to make sure we had the commissions also included and understood that they were part of the travel policy.
Do they do a lot of traveling?
No, but I think there, perhaps with the Planning Commission, there are some regular trainings that go on with that, with that body in particular.
Okay, all right. I have no items, thank you.
Councilmember Blom.
I'd like to lodge a no vote on item 3. I have nothing else.
Councilmember Duffield. Mayor Protem.
Got a couple, Mr. Mayor. Lodge a conflict on item 5, and item 10, and item 13 related to business interest in telecommunications. Item 3, or item 13, that, the last one I listed, it's specifically item 2 and 3. And then I'm going to lodge a no vote on item 11.
All right, and I have none.
I have a motion when you're ready.
All right.
I move the balance of consent calendar items 1 through 15 with amendment to the minutes. No clarification requested from the dais. No vote on item 3 by councilmembers O'Neill and Blom, and a no vote on 11 by myself, recusal by myself on items 5, 10, and 13.
Thank you. Do we have a second? We have a second, all right. So, Ms. Dixon, did you have anything?
No.
All right. So we'll first hear public comments from those in the council chambers, and then on Zoom, and this is on the consent calendar. Anybody wish to come forward? Any additional council comments? Then let's vote, please.
Yes.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles, titles for items 3 and 4. Ordinance number 2021-10, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach amending section 1.05.020, section 1.05060, and section 1.12.020 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to increase fines and violations of municipal code and shorten the administrative citation appeal period, and ordinance number 2021-11, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach adopting zoning code amendment number CA 2020-009, amending table 2-8, allowed uses and permit requirements of section 20.22.020, mixed-use zoning districts' land uses and permit requirements of title 20, planning and zoning of the Newport Beach Municipal Code, to allow eating and drinking establishments and large health fitness facilities. In the MUDW mixed-use Dover-West Cliff zoning district, the motion carries, oh, oh, Mayor Avery, if you can vote, please.
Should show up eventually.
Got it. Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. And now we'll have comments on non-agent items.
We already took comments on non-agent items. Did anybody miss it earlier? I think we can just move on.
Okay, great. All right, we're on to a public hearing. The next item is a resolution on number 2021-46, Lower Newport Bay Confined Aquatic Disposal Construction Project Environmental Impact Report. And I know we have some staff reports.
Thank you for the opportunity to come together tonight as we continue on our efforts to dredge the federal channels within our harbor. You saw a little bit of that tonight, the mayor had a slide on. That was phase one that's underway now, the entrance channel. We are working towards phase two and getting that dredge, so we have some federal funding involved. Tonight, we're going to be talking about one of the solutions we have to taking care of some sediments in harbor disposal, and so we're going to go through that with you, answer your questions, and then we'll be talking about hopefully approving an environmental document tonight for that project. Tonight with us, Chris Miller's our project manager on this. He will be giving the presentation. We have our consultant teams from Anchor here and various folks to help us along. So Chris, I'm going to go ahead and open up to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I'll jump right into it. Our recommendation this evening is for the City Council to adopt resolution number 2021-46, certifying the environmental impact report ER 2021-001, and also to adopt the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, and also to make facts and findings, and also to approve the construction of a confined aquatic disposal facility and dredging outside of the federal channels in lower Newport Harbor. This is a graphic that shows the area that the Army Corps is to, is planned to dredge in the near future. These are what's called federal channels, and they're maintained by the federal government. This certainly isn't all of the channels that need to be dredged, or, pardon me, that all the channels that the federal government is responsible for maintaining, but these are the channels that, that need to be dredged. Dredging removes accumulated sediment, which restores original navigation, brings our harbor down to its authorized depths. It also improves tidal flushing and improved water quality. It promotes full use of the harbor, and it keeps, it keeps us as long-term stewards of the harbor, maintaining our harbor, keeping it in good condition, and maintaining the Currently, the Army Corps is dredging in the areas noted on the screen, and phase two in the future would be the rest of the material. The City of Newport Beach is a local sponsor with the Corps. With, the Corps and the federal government does turn to local sponsors for assistance, and also the county is involved as well under, when they have small areas of county tid lanes, but primarily, most of the tid lanes are city tid lanes. The first thing when you dredge is you have to characterize your sediment, and that means testing your sediment. Find out what's there, what, what you're working with. It's a, it's a testing procedure that's vetted and approved by the regulatory and resource agencies, and it's quite robust. The City Council has approved very many sediment testing programs in the harbor. In this particular one, about 60 cores were analyzed, and in fact, no toxicity occurred from the biological testing. About 90% of the bottom sediment material is suitable for open ocean placement, and that means either in the nearshore zone, along our ocean beaches, or at what we call LA3, which is six miles offshore. It's an EPA-regulated disposal site, as shown on the screen. This material from the harbor will, if it is coarse grain material, meaning good beach quality material, will go in the green zone, and it'll be naturally washed on shore to replenish our peninsula ocean beaches. But the finer grain material goes out to LA3, six miles out. Now, what to do with the 10% of the material that is not suitable for open ocean disposal? Per the EPA policy, sediment, the, the current sediment is allowed to stay in place. It's currently on the harbor bottom right now. The EPA has different standards governing disposal, but dredging these areas is not feasible without identifying an alternative disposal method. As the local sponsor, how it works with the Corps, the Corps turns to the local sponsor, which in this case is the city, for identifying a disposal location on behalf of the Corps. So it's incumbent upon us to find a solution, and then the Corps will come in and dredge. Now, the sampling and analysis report is also included in the EIR. Now's the time for me to go in the details of what was found in our sediment characterization. And I will back up and say that the city was very active with working with EPA and the regulator, the regulators, to analyze our data and get feedback from them. We went to Washington DC several times, we went to San Francisco once, and we had several meetings and phone calls with EPA and other regulatory agencies. The EPA has a standard of 1.0 parts per million to dispose in the open ocean area. We negotiated with the EPA during all those meetings, it took a very long time, and the EPA allowed us to go to, to, to accept a level of 1.5 parts per million of mercury. Now, that .5 doesn't sound like much, but it is a lot. That equated to about 70,000 cubic yards of extra material that we were allowed to dispose of out in the open ocean. The rest of the material exists on the bottom now, and again, this material was not found to be toxic or hazardous. It passed all of our tests. Now, here's an exhibit that shows what 1.0, which is what is the, what is the off-the-cuff rule that the EPA would have, and please focus on the olive-colored areas on the chart. That represents a, a level of 1.0 parts per million of mercury. This was before our advocacy and negotiating with the EPA. I'm going to flip to the next slide, and if you can watch the olive area decrease, and that represents the 1.5 parts per million. Notice how it decreased. I'll do that once again. That's at 1.0, and after advocacy and negotiating with the EPA, we were able to, to bump that up to 1.5. This, this exhibit shows the level of testing that we've done in certain areas, and it demonstrates that not all of the harbor is squeaky clean. Even in the Anchorage area, we have higher elevations of DDT and mercury, but there's small pockets. Fortunately, this material is able to be disposed at LA3. Another example of material, you can notice the red squares and circles in the previous slide and this slide, that show where that material is.
Chris, can I jump in just a, I think this is an important point. I just want to belabor on this a little bit, because I was in the EPA meeting in San Francisco, and it's, we hear a lot in the community from the folks and the concerns we have. Chris, point out one thing, none of the material is toxic. We had extensive tests on it. I've heard comments saying it's toxic material. It is not toxic, and we have the facts and the data to prove that. Secondly, you'll notice these numbers on there. That's important, because when you get into the weeds on this with the EPA and how they figure out what goes in, what goes out, these numbers matter, and we have, all these are test holes, and all those levels are on, you'll see one, the highest one I saw, and there was 4.2. Remember, that's parts per million. And where I come off that was, and I'm not trying to take anything away from this, but we're talking parts per million here. So think of your council room here full of ping pong balls, they're all white, and I put one red ping pong ball in here. That's one part per million. If it has one ping pong ball, it can go out in the ocean. If I put two red ping pong balls in there, it stays. It can't go out in the ocean. So we labored hard with EPA, basically arm wrestle with them, and really got on about how can we move more of this material? And I think that's where Chris pointed out, I didn't want to get that lost. We advocated with them, and they said, you know what, we know what you're doing, we know how hard it is to dredge in California, actually, around the United States, there's just no disposal sites, and we understand that. We do have concerns about precedence. There are a lot worse areas in this state, like Oakland and other places, big shipyards that they're worried about, boy, if we start letting a little out there, it's just going to be a problem. So, but, but they did calculate and say, you know what, we will go, if you do the whole harbor, if you take care of all the issues, so we don't have to come back to this, we'll go to 1.5. And as Chris mentioned, that was 70,000 yards, which probably equated to $800,000 in dredging material that we got out to LA3. There is a residual, but I, we have to keep those facts in mind, because a lot of people hear about, oh, my gosh, what are you leaving? This is material that's on the bottom now, that we are looking to take care of and do some kind of disposal of, and again, we are over the, the federal limit, they call. I look at this as a paper problem, too. Sometime, we're dealing with regulators. They draw lines, they're hard on it. We're 1.0 and 1, and 2.0. When you talk about millions and billions, that's real close stuff. So I just wanted to belabor that a little bit, but thank you, Christopher, let me interrupt.
Ms. Dixon.
Dave, or Chris, if it's not, just for all of us laypeople, if it's non-toxic, why can't it go out into the ocean?
Well, we had that conversation several times with EPA, all the way up, and I remember sitting in Washington with the head of the EPA, and Mr. Duffield was there, and there are some good rules behind it, they have the rules, and they set these limits based on a lot of data, different areas, they try to, you know, across the United States, it all fits the same. We had this discussion, remember, on copper boat paints? Not, we talked about nine point, I think it was 3.1 was the limit there for a long time, but it's different if you go to Seattle versus here versus east coast, but the EPA kind of puts that on everybody, and they want to set a limit, safe enough that in all cases, there are no problems. Well, but we go beyond that. We test for toxicity, test for other things, and prove, look, we, that's what they're trying to guard against. We don't have toxicity here. The other thing is mercury, I know, and you'll, you hear from the waterborne, it is a constituent of concerns. That's the one that has the uptake with fish and animals and gets into the food chain. So we are concerned about that, but again, we're talking really low. I, I hear voices out there like, boy, we got a big problem. We are just barely at the line here. So, I mean, a little bit, one part, and this thing could go the other way, but they, they're pretty strong on those limits, and we couldn't get any further than 1.0. I'm sorry, 1.5 parts per million.
It just seems like such an arbitrary number. How many more, what do you, what do you call them, gallon, how many, how do you, what's the measurement, gallons or, of the, of the dredged material?
Oh, there's cubic yards we take out.
Cubic yards. How of this remaining that doesn't qualify to go out in the ocean, how many cubic yards is that?
There's about 100,000 yards that has to be dealt with and not be able to go to the ocean.
Chris, would you mind just going back to a previous slide? So if I look at this correctly, in the area just above that channel line there, which is really the east end of Lido, I don't see any red markings there. Does that mean there's no material there, no red mercury there? Is that right? That area is, is free right now?
Actually, there are red markings. There's red circles and red diamonds, and the diamonds represent, there is one red diamond which represents.
Oh, you know what, I was looking the wrong place.
Mercury.
All right, so there are, right there in front, there are, excuse me, I'm wrong.
Yeah, but this is just one slide, and the next one's another. We took data points to kind of show you examples. They have it all the way up down.
Exactly. I was wrong. I was looking above that, so it's not, that's at the east end of Lido.
By the way, just a note on this slide, this, all this material, and this is where the CAD's located, is allowed to go out, and it's complex math they do, and I'd have to get into scientists here, Steve would have to help me, but they do mass loading equations, and they figure, okay, there's one at 2.3, but there's one at .5, and there's one at this, and they equate it to how much you can go. We talked about mixing it, we talked about taking the, the bad stuff out first, and putting all the good stuff on top of it, none of which was acceptable to them. I'll note, too, that in that area right there, there's two elements. The red, the diamonds are mercury, and the dots are PCBs. There are PCBs we're dealing with here, but luckily, they didn't find that significant enough that they allowed us to take the material in that area out to the offshore, too.
And just to answer a couple of public letters that we've received, the question is why we couldn't go to where the material was taken to in 2012, and that's because that's no longer available off Long Beach, is that correct?
I'll be discussing that in a few more slides.
Okay, all right. Thank you both. Appreciate it.
So this slide focuses on the sediment management plan, and the sediment management plan was one of the conditions that the EPA said to us that, you know, if, if they're going to give on the 1.5 level, we'd like for the city to identify, to, to develop a sediment management plan. It's a roadmap. It's a working plan, it's a living document that will change as the years go on. And, and what this does is it identifies all of our material in Newport Harbor and puts together a plan, just like Mr. Webb does with the streets, and with his paving, and so on and so forth. It's a roadmap, and it's a planning document, and it creates an inventory of the harbor sediment, and it identifies sediment management options, locations, and permitting requirements depending on the, the characterization of each little segment of, of sediment. Now, this document is not required as part of the SEQA EIR, but it's something that the EPA asked us to do, and we think it's a good thing to do anyway. This is included as an appendix to our EIR. Now, this, this slide represents the residential and commercial marinas along the shoreline of Newport Harbor. And I know it's hard to see, but all we need to look at and focus on are the different colors around the shoreline. This represents our RGP-54 permit. Most of everybody in the room has heard of that, and especially if you're, if you're a dock owner, you rely on that permit to do dredging. The material that's in royal blue is good to go. No questions asked. Your material can either be put back on a beach or disposed at LA3. But the other material, about 450 residential docks, have some sort of caveat to the sediment testing, and they have to either do further testing, and they may have sediment disposal options or problems. And so, I'm, I'm, I'm letting you know that, that the harbor has different pockets that need help for disposal. That doesn't mean that all of those areas need assistance, but they require further testing to justify it.
And Chris, if I can add to that. Again, this is a harbor commission, and we've dealt with many times, when, when a local shore person wants to dredge their dock, and if they're in one of those non-blue areas, I say the light blue, there's red on there and there's yellow. Those are problematic. That material cannot be taken out to the ocean. They don't have a disposal for it. So, think of a, a residential homeowner as a small frontage, and he has to move 200 yards of material. The cost of just moving that material normally is so much because it's so small. Now, you put some sediment problems in it, and they have no place to take it. They turn out they can't dredge it. So, part of the solution coming up is we're looking forward to about outside the problems of just the federal channels, but I think that's the point of your slide here.
It is. And I would also like to add that sediment, when you characterize sediment, it has a shelf life of five years, meaning that every five years for the RGP program, we have to characterize and test that sediment again to validate the results. So, when we're looking at disposal site project objectives, we want to find something that's appropriate and feasible area for sediment that is unsuitable for ocean disposal. We want to minimize impacts to the maximum extent practical. We want to try to accommodate a small volume of RGP unsuitable sediments in limited areas outside of the federal channels, as I just discussed, lend a hand to our fellow residents, and promote beneficial material reuse through beach nourishment. Now, in prior years, in 2011 and 12, we were very fortunate when we were dredging the Rhine Channel in 2011 and the Lower Bay in 2012. We were extremely fortunate to have the Port of Long Beach open up their doors to the city of Newport Beach. But I, I would like to say that they did not accept all the material because we only dredged about half of our harbor at the time. They had other harbors that also needed to dispose in that, in the Port of Long Beach. And in fact, there are a lot of other harbors, particularly Marina Del Rey, that did not get to dispose of all their material in the Port of Long Beach, and they are waiting in line. In other words, they weren't able to satisfy all the, all the sediment needs back in 2012, so there's a backlog of harbors that are way in front of us to take advantage of anything that could come along at the ports, of which there are no options in the immediate, in the immediate and long-term future. But we did discover many dispos, or we did consider many disposal options, and, and this is a good example of the confined disposal facilities, both within, we did consider projects within and outside of Newport Harbor. But not all options are viable. So, as with SEQA, with our environmental impact report, we have to analyze, we have to provide alternatives. And again, we can, we analyze the most feasible and practical alternatives. Not every single alternative needs to be analyzed and documented, but we did consider a lot. Project alternative number one would be to not dredge at all and leave the bottom sediments in place, and those would be the areas in the red circle. This graphic shows the 1.0 mercury option, which is the default EPA limit. So, notice the olive areas are, are gray, are bigger. And I will remind also that the sediment has a five-year shelf life. So, if we did not dredge and we left this on the table, we would most certainly have to recharacterize the sediment again within about a year.
And just to clarify, Chris, we, we could dredge, we, the Corps would come in and dredge the blue areas before the, let's say, the olive areas. But if you leave those olives in place, you leave that speed bump. You leave that place where that keel or that boat can't get through. So, they could get up to the Turning Basin, but those deep draft vessels would have a problem getting forward. And the other big concern in this one, too, our biggest shipyard is up on the Newport Channel up there, Newport Shipyard, and they're the ones that take the big boats, and they're the ones that are having problems. And these two particular places you see there would be problematic for them to service their customers. So, just want to let you know that, I mean, if we don't dredge, that material could stay there if we can't find a position for it. We could clean up the front of it and take care of that. Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay.
Do we have, if we didn't dredge under that alternative, what would be the period of time where the sediment level would rise and there'd be no passage?
Well, the good news is, I think, we've controlled a lot of our sediment through our water quality efforts, and you recall your time as the chair on that committee. We've done a lot of work upstream. Most of the sediment came down, it's legacy coming down from San Diego Creek in the 60s and 70s, the big storms when they cut San Diego Creek through. We've put two big basins up in the Upper Bay, and we've done a lot of work up in the cities up there. So, the amount of sediment coming down will really decrease. We don't get that much, nothing like we used to, but there'll be a little accretion, you know, a little bit every storm. But it's, the big problem is, I think, there's five or six feet in that channel, and it causes a navigational problem now, and also creates the lack of flushing back there. So, I don't see more, I just see the problem would stay with us.
What does, so you don't say it's going to rise?
It's not going to, it's going to rise, but not at a har, at a real fast rate, if I'm correct in that. That would be the consensus.
Yes, that is correct.
Well, are there any boats now that cannot make passage?
You know, I'm not a mariner on that. I have to ask some of the folks. I know we used to put a lot of bigger boats in here. I would have to talk to the shipyard back there because you get those deep keel boats, probably the transpack ones that can't get back there. So, that's business they can't do anymore. I, I do hear stories that certain people have to come in at high tide, they can't come in at low tide. And I know when the Invictus came through, correct me if I'm wrong, they're, they're blowing material up from the bottom. They're, they're closed. So, we, we don't know what boats were missing. There's, when a big boat comes in and spends some time in our harbor, they tell me, and again, I'm not the mariner, but there's a lot of money from that boat in fuel and shore provisions and stuff. And it's probably a good thing the harbor commission's talked about getting more of those people there. If the harbor's fully dredged, you might find some of these folks that are creascent around the world might visit our harbor more, and obviously, it'd be an economic boom for us. But right now, we, I, I couldn't tell you how many people are not making it back there. I don't know if anybody could, I don't know if we'd have a record of that. We might want to ask some of the shipowners. They might know, or some of the mariners.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we also looked at another scenario, which is no CAD construction, no confined aquatic disposal construction. Just don't do it. And we would remove everything by truck. So, this exhibit shows a fictitious example of what that would look like. And I say fictitious because I'm not suggesting that we would use the Canary Restaurant this evening to, to dispose of our material or to, to assist in that. But what this, what this involves is a very laborious process of a scow at the end of the Rhine Channel being offloaded by an excavator onto some, some tarp or holding area to be dewatered for a certain amount of time before it can be loaded onto trucks and trucked to a permitted landfill likely outside of the Orange County area. And if you do the math on that, that equates to about 8,800 round trip, truck trips. And what this also does is it slows down our dredging process because the dredger has to wait for the scows to unload and to dry out and to truck the material. This would be a great impact, both from an air quality on our roads and our peace enjoyment in, in Newport Beach.
Yeah, and you could imagine this. We did a detailed analysis, and anchors here, they can talk if you want to get into the details of this. But think about the truck trips in that area. You're going to need a place to unload these scows, and this is the Rhine Channel, I'm not sure else. It could be some other places in the harbor, but you're going to have a dewatering effort. The big thing is the cost impacts, too. It, it slows the dredging project down. You're almost triple handling by you move it in the scow, the scow moves it to a dewatering area, then you move it into a truck. That adds a lot of cost, too. And I, I've forgotten the number we're talking, but it's, it's big, what you're going to add if you did such an alternative. Not that it can't be done, but there are impacts in itself. There's the diesel emissions, all the other stuff that come with it. So, that's why this alternative didn't raise to the top.
That's correct. Alternative three would be a smaller CAD. Just reduce the size of your CAD site. Now, we haven't, we have not determined whether that's 50% of the CAD or 40% or 60%, but it would be a smaller CAD. And that means less dredging of the unsuitable material, basically leaving the material in place. What the pictures show is a real-life example from a few years back in San Diego of what that rehandling involves, and it's a fairly laborious process. The fourth option is a smaller CAD, but then using the remaining, the remaining material that you did not dredge and did not put in the CAD would be trucked off-site. So, so option four is a, is a variation of option three.
Let's go back to that. So, is there a way to segregate the red and, and diamond materials, and that could be trucked off?
Well, in our, in our first couple of slides, we showed the 1.0 and the 1.5, and all, we could, we could dredge all the blue areas, let's say, and then leave, leave that area, leave the, the area the size of this, this room in, in place, as a, for instance. That would be the olive area.
That'd be option one, leaving the contaminants in place. I think what Diane says is, can we separate that? Complex math, but when you do a testing, and again, I might have to have Steve help me on this, but they do a, a testing there. They kind of figure, okay, what's in there? It's, let's say it comes up 2.9 parts per million. They take a certain volume around that and say, we don't know where that is, but everything in here is considered 2.9. And so, you can't really separate out that one ping pong ball. You got to take the whole million yards and go.
All right, but you could identify the blue area. So, for example, hypothetically, you could dredge all the blue and put that in the CAD, and then the olive areas is, is less, significantly less, and that possibly could be treated elsewhere, carted off elsewhere.
So, the olive area is the point we're talking about. That's where the, the contaminants are at.
Right.
And that's the, that's the 100,000 yards, all those olive areas. So, can you go back to that slide, Chris? Go to the 1.0.
But not the blue areas.
The blue areas are clean. They're, they can go to the ocean.
That's, oh.
And that's segregated with sandy material that goes to the beach and the other-
All right, so the blue is going to the ocean regardless.
Right. The green areas can't go. They have to be treated separately.
All right.
That's what we're talking about today. So, this slide says, well, you can leave them in place, but you still kind of have that plug in those, those bays. Go ahead and get to your last one.
So, our project alternative number five is why we're here tonight and to talk about the location of the confined aquatic disposal site. And we chose the green area over the red areas for many different reasons. One is constructability. The, if the material is where, is in the vicinity of where the red proposed sites are on either side of Lido Island, then it, it, it's very, it's easier to construct the project if you're not having to travel all the way around Lido Isle to dispose of your material. If you've got two sites, the green area is a central location. Also, current site conditions dictate that it, it is, it is the best location from a depth perspective. These locations here have, a couple of them have depth issues. And what that means is if, if you're, if your depth, the authorized depth for those channels right where those red boxes is 10 feet, that's, that's really shallow. That means that you cannot load up your scow to its maximum capacity, therefore slowing down your project, light loading your scow, and, and you're not very efficient.
And I'm just going to clarify, we're talking about in harbor disposal now. We're talking about, these are the locations we should look at to basically dig a hole and put that material in. And we, we did evaluate several options on these, and where we're looking at is that green location right there. The other ones have issues about loading, extending time. You look at the one right off of Lido Island, it's right in the middle of a mooring field in 10 feet of water. So, not only do we have a scow problem, we can't load it to get all the way in there, and we have to bring the material all the way around, but we got to move all those moorings and deal with that, too. So, that's why we started looking, and then the best example here would be the, the green location. I think your next slide points to-
What's the depth of the green location?
The depth in that is 15 feet.
The, the authorized depth is 15 feet. It's about, it's about 12 feet right now.
But if you went to that first slide we showed, the first thing they'll do is they'll dredge that out. They'll take that material, because it's clean, and all the stuff on top of that in that green area goes to the open ocean. So, they're going to dig all that out. It all goes out. There won't be any restockpiling, rehandling of it, and then you'll just be able to move your material into it. I think we're a slide back, though.
And those are low-water depths, right?
I know, other way.
Chris?
Pardon me?
Low-water depths, right? You're talking about-
Mean lower low water? Correct. One more point about the Turning Basin, which is the box on the upper left-hand corner of, of this slide. That material, that might be a good location, except the top veneer of material is not suitable for ocean disposal, meaning you'd have to do something with the top foot or so of that material before you can dig your confined aquatic disposal site. So, you'd have to dig a smaller site right next to it, put that top level of material in, and then dig the big site. It becomes more complicated, and it, it, it adds, it adds time and cost to the project.
And again, we're trying not to get too much in the weeds, but there's, all these sites were looked at carefully, and we have, the experts here can look at that. But there are complications. You want to double handle, like Chris has said, we have to take all that pink area off, put over here, we'll, we have to dig a hole for that, put it in, then move that in here, and then move it back. The good thing about the green is we're going to dig it out anyway. It's all going out, so once you dig it, we, we don't double handle anything, plus it's centrally located. So, that's kind of why we're leading to that location.
So, this is, this is the location, this was the green area that was shown on this, on the previous slide. It's centrally located in the harbor. It reduces a transit time, equal proximity, deeper water. It's not an O'Neil grass area, and it's an area already required to be dredged because I just mentioned to the mayor that that is at minus 12 about. It's authorized to go to minus 15, so it already needs to be dredged anyway.
So, Chris, so is it the outline that's the CAD, or is it the colors?
I'm sorry. The, the yellow dashed line represents the footprint of the CAD. Now, imagine an inverted pyramid. The walls of the CAD, as you dig, go in.
Yeah.
And the graphic in the center of that CAD represents a real-life example of the green is the dredge barge, the yellow is the, I'm sorry, the green is the scow, the yellow is the, or the, the light green is the barge, and the red is the tugboat. And if you notice in the upper part of the, of the screen, you'll actually see the actual scow that was dredging in 2000, 2012.
Right. So, the barge then, doors open up to release the material?
Yes.
The material falls into the CAD?
Yes.
And what about the plume? What about the, the current carrying it off? Does that, is that an issue?
That, that's analyzed, and I'm going to get to that in a, in a few slides.
The graphic that shows the, coming up, right?
Yeah. Next. With the recommended, pardon me. So, now is the time to talk about the CAD construction process. So now is the time to talk about the CAD construction process. How is it built and, and, and the process? So the anchorage area where the CAD is proposed to be will be relocated to the turning basin area. The material that we use when we're digging out the CAD site will be used to renewish Newport's ocean beaches and placed in LA, or placed in LA 3. Now, the CAD is designed to accommodate 156,000 cubic yards. Remember, 106,000 of that is from the federal dredging project. And you remember, I spoke earlier about the RGP 54, our residential homeowners and businesses who need to dredge along the shoreline. We're allotting 50,000 cubic yards for those folks. We may not use all those 50,000, but we've, we've designed it in for them. And it's really important to note that no external material outside of Newport Harbor will be used. This is a graphic example of how the CAD is built. It is simply digging a hole in, in the sediment underwater. There are no barriers, or pardon me, there are no, there are no plates. It's not a concrete structure. It is simply a hole, a very deep hole, that is 47 feet deep. And you can see in the fifth box that there is a cap that is put on that, and then the last box represents the final cap.
And Chris, just for reference, you know, we're also working on another project to renewish our ocean beaches. We have the Stage 13 project. It's funny, I was looking at this last night, and that's exactly what they do. They do that about a mile offshore on Seal Beach. They go out and dig a hole, take all that material, sand, and put it on the beach. And they leave the hole out there. In our case, we're going to dig that hole, take this material, put it on our beach, but we're going to put material back in it, so when we're done, it, it's basically just an ocean bottom again, so.
Can I ask you a question? May I just go? I think one area of confusion, when you were communicating early, many months ago on this, you referred to this depression, this hole, as a vault. And I think people thought it was actually a concrete vault, a bank vault or something, that that would provide greater protection and capture the material. So this is obviously not a concrete vault.
No, I, I don't remember vaults. I don't know where that came from.
Well, somehow it got in, mixed up in the conversations.
No, we've always intended, it's basically just a, a hole that slopes down.
Yeah, I just wanted to, wanted to clarify that. And to your point about other areas, could you just spend a moment, just talk about where these kinds of storage depressions are, exist?
Steve can do that.
Steve, would you like to answer?
Sure. So in 2001, the Corps of Engineers constructed the first CAD cell in Southern California. That's right off the, right off the beach in Long Beach, near where the Energy Islands are. And about 2009, a second one was constructed in Port Wainimi Harbor. That was about a million cubic yards for the hole that was excavated. And there's currently two depressions at the Port of Long Beach that they're working on permitting actively right now as CAD cells.
Well, just a point that we all know. I mean, those are industrial areas, not close to residential property.
Correct. They are, they are not close. The closest one would be the City of Long Beach one, which is actually probably about a quarter mile off of the public beach.
So is there any existing CAD depression anywhere in the world within 50 yards of a residence?
Yes. And, and in the northeast, there are actually some that have been constructed there, and we could provide links to those, so you guys could see what those look like. By herons in California on the West Coast, I don't know of any.
Where do you mean, northeast in the Atlantic Ocean, or?
No, like, like in New Bedford Harbor.
Okay.
I think we had some exhibits of those when we talked to some of our folks. We had some.
So it's within, it's within 50 yards, 10 yards, 20 yards of a residence?
I would say within a couple hundred yards, yes.
Oh, still a couple hundred. Is there any example of something with the proximity that this CAD would have to residential property?
Not that I know of. But I also know that the other facilities are receiving much higher concentration material than what is being proposed at Newport Harbor.
Okay, but still, nothing exists so close to homes. Okay, all right. Keep going.
This slide just recaps what we've just talked about by digging a deep hole and placing the sediment inside. One of the things that you do when you design a, a project like this is, is you develop what's called a basis of design report, which is a technical feasibility report. It's, goes over the design features and construction approach, and it outlines the permitting strategy. But most importantly, to answer the mayor's question from, from earlier, it analyzes technical details such as subsurface conditions, soil types, how big it should be, long-term placement of sediments, the stability of the adjacent structures next to it, the consolidation of the material over time, the equipment types that will be used to, to build it, and then a lot of numerical modeling, modeling wind, storm waves, vessel wakes, potential prop wash, et cetera. All important things to do before you design a project, while you're designing a project. When we're done, when we're done with putting the material into the CAD, we will put an interim cap on the CAD, and we will let it sit for two years. And the reason why we're going to do that is because this, this timeframe will allow the shoreline residents to the time, the necessary time it takes to get permits to take advantage of the CAD after two years. They'll have a relatively small window of six months, but with outreach from the community, or for outreach from the city to the community, and they can start permitting and getting all their permits in a row, they will be able to take advantage of this, as I said earlier, and, and it'll be able to accommodate up to 50,000 cubic yards of extra material, only from Newport Beach. Now, the final cap will be placed at minus 22 mean lower low water, which is five feet deeper than its authorized depth right now. So what that does is that plans for the future, so that we won't need to dredge any deeper. We will already have planned for that, and that'll match our adjacent channels.
And just a note while I'm looking at this, this is one of the areas we work with the community on. We originally, when we met with the consultants and even the harbor commissioners, we thought about using this for 10 years, because it's a valuable resource to harbor. I don't know, I can't force every harbor owner to go ahead and do his dredging within two years. We thought, why don't we just leave it open for 10 years? The community had some real concerns about that. We worked with them, we went back, we determined, you know what, I think it'd be fine if we just get everything in it, let it sit there for, with an interim cap for two years, and give our folks enough time. We encourage them to get their act together, and then six months to put your material in, and then it's closed up, we're never there again. So that was kind of a compromise coming out of our discussions with the community. Well, it's, it's more for the residents. And again, this is, I remember sitting through the harbor commission meetings where the residents come, I have no way to dredge them in front of my house, because I have no place to put my material. They're going to need time to go ahead and get their coastal permits, the Corps of Engineer permits. If, once we have it, they're going to have to go out and get a permit still, and then hire a dredger to take their material and take it over to the CAD. RGP.
Right, right now, the RGP is not, is, does not have language in it that is, that allows for CAD disposal. But certainly, that'll be the next thing that we work on with our permitting. But regardless of the RGP, it still does take a lot of time for residents to financially plan for a dredging episode in front of their house, and then to line somebody up. So two years, it sounds like a long time, but in the permitting world, as we know, being a coastal city, things do take time. This is a view of what the turning basin, no, pardon me, what the anchorage area looks like with a dredge from 2012. This, we, you know, we had some, we had some comments that dredging in one particular place would impede navigation and recreation. But indeed, by, if the anchorage is removed and all that is left is a dredge, the water area will be increased and open for better use and more use, less congestion, and increased navigation, or increased recreation. I think this, this picture speaks a thousand words. One of the comments that we received is we didn't have, that we were lacking on some outreach, and this, this slide just shows the various outreach that we did to local stakeholders, Lido Isle Community Association, other important folks, Coast Keeper, Spawn, Yachtsman's Luncheon, Speak Up Newport, Harbor Commission, and so on and so forth, and lots of media articles as, as well.
I think that's an important point, because that was a comment we heard, but as you can see here, we've gone far and above. One of council's direction, we worked with Councilman Duffield to really get out the community. Newport Harbor Yacht Club, we went to everybody, and look at, back at the dates there, it's been a long time. We did extensive outreach on this, much more than your typical newspaper article and flag in EIR. We actually, having a hearing at the harbor commission, it's not a requirement. We did that anyway, because we have a harbor commission. We don't need to have that hearing, but we're having it tonight. So, I mean, there's been a lot of outreach and a lot of reach to try to get people and bring those ideas. And like I said, we've taken where we can, and we've incorporated those. Sorry, I interrupted.
Now, we're here, we're here this evening for the SEQA review, which is the environmental impact report. And our SEQA review considers the whole of the project, which is the CAD and the federal channels dredging. The entire environmental record with mitigation measures incorporated into the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. Our findings are such that no project-level impacts, less-than-significant project-level impacts, and no known significant and unavoidable effects on the environment. One of the things that you have to do is you have to identify your mitigation measures. And I'm just going to briefly go through each of these points right now. What's common in construction, and certainly dredging, is that tier-four engine requirements are for, for tugboats in this example. Or if that, if tier-four engines are not available, then tier, they must be tier-three compliant. Of course, pre-construction calerpa and eelgrass surveys must be completed. And if there is eelgrass, which there is no known eelgrass in that area, but if there is, it will be mitigated. Construction will be stopped or relocated if any non-native artifact, bone, or shell are found. Of course, there'll be post-construction monitoring for geologic bathymetry and cap coring, greenhouse gas credits. We will have to purchase those. That's what we did in a, in 2011 with the Rhine Channel. We did purchase greenhouse gas credits. There will be extensive water quality monitoring during construction. Of course, there'll be water quality BMPs, and material will be placed outside of the tidal extremes to avoid plumes. This is a recap of, of our SEQA process to date. We had a public scoping meeting in December 4th of 2019. Then in December 4th of 2020, our draft EIR public comment period began. It ended in January 20th, 2021. April 14th, we went to the harbor commission, who recommended that the city council certify the environmental impact report. The supporting resolution is within the staff report this evening, and we're here this evening on May 25th. The next steps would be regulatory permits. Regulatory permits cannot be obtained without getting your SEQA certified. And so this is an aggressive schedule, but we're anticipating six months or so for permits through the Coastal Commission, the Corps, and the Regional Water Quality Control Board. I'm, I'm hoping that's the case. They've all been, we, I have met with them extensively for the past few years on this project, so they, they would not be coming into it cold. They're very well-versed on it. Also, we would be in front of the Southern California Dredged Material Management Team, which is, which is every single resource and regulatory agency, including the EPA and others, who provide input on dredging projects. And then, of course, there is the funding arm. So after we, after this evening, if the EIR is certified, then we go on to permitting, and at the same time, we're working on funding. We've been working on funding for many, many years. The city council has gone to Washington DC, and we've had certainly a lot of meetings with our local congress members. It's an estimated $20 million project, and we've, the city has committed to spending half or paying for half of the project if the Corps pays for the other half. And right now, we are on our final, final push with our federal legislators to complete the funding gap that we have, and then that would allow us to proceed. Finally, our recommendation is for the city council to certify the EIR and approve the project. With approval of this project, the full dredging, with approval of this EIR and the CAD project, the full project can proceed, and thus will. It'll improve harbor navigation and re, and remove the current depth restriction, restrictions for deeper draft vessels. Of course, it'll improve water quality and tidal flushing, leading to long-term enhanced fisheries, wildlife, eelgrass acreage, and recreational usage. It'll enhance replenish our peninsula ocean beaches with much-needed sand. Importantly, it will provide much-needed assistance to our Newport residents who have private dredging disposal complications. Those are the RGP 54 areas that were not royal blue on our, on the, on the slide, many slides ago. It will enhance the harbor's economic viability, as well as increased visitor usage by deeper draft vessels. A good example of that is better access to our shipyards, particularly Newport Harbor Shipyard, which attracts the largest vessels in the harbor and outside of the harbor. And it addresses navigational channels, sediment issues now, while the funding window and the regulatory support exist. It keeps, keeps Newport as long-term stewards, protecting the long-term viability of the
And with that, we thank you for your time and presentation, and welcome to any questions or comments.
Thank you. Mr. Duffield.
Yeah, can you, the mayor asked earlier about the sediment plume and the water column when we're dredging. Can you just give us a quick understanding of that?
Right, so one of, one of the greatest concerns when you're doing any type of aquatic disposal project like this is what happens when the barge cracks in half and all the material falls out? Obviously, there's a concern that some of that material can be entrained in the water column and could drift with the tides and the currents and the wind away from the site. So part of the design process in this basis of design document that Chris mentioned is you do extensive computer modeling, which we've also collected field data to validate and make sure that the models are accurate, that predicts where the plume would go under different tide extremes, like what would happen at the highest, you know, when the currents are moving the quickest versus during the, the slack tides, when the tides are changing. And then from that, you basically develop a prediction, and you put any potential limitations on it. So for example, on this project, one of the recommendations was that the disposal events would occur during the slack tide events or near slack tide events, when the currents are the slowest, to minimize that movement of material potentially lost from the site. One of the items that, you know, when, and Chris and Dave were talking about the selection of the, the locations of the, the CAD, a huge component is you want to look at the depth of the water from the point when the material drops out of it to where it hits in the hole. Essentially, your freeboard of available water space before the, the edges of the pit. The shorter that distance, the, the, the least likely you're going to have the currents carrying that material away. So one of the huge cons of putting a CAD cell, for example, in the, in the turning basin is that the water is at a greater depth, and it's got to travel a lot longer in that water column before it goes down into the hole, and you have a greater opportunity for potentially losing that material around to the surrounding environments.
Thank you.
Mr. Muldoon.
Yes. I mentioned more on the human effect of, of this process. Could you take me back to the slide where you show the hole on, on the floor of the harbor?
I'm sorry, which, which slide?
The slide where you show the hole on the floor of the harbor.
Okay.
The turning basin, the identified spot you're, you're recommending. I think one or two more back.
Okay.
There we go, this one.
Oh, pardon me.
There we go. This looks like a sixth-grade science book right here. So you, you excavate it, you make room, and here, four and five, or four really, let's say in, in phase four, you're placing the, the concentrated sediment, that's more concentrated than it was at its prior location, correct? And you're placing in, in this area.
The concentration will be the same as when you pick it up?
It would be the same.
Yeah, you, you were picking up all that and goes in a barge and gets dropped. It's not mixed, or we're not taking clean?
Yes.
Sediment and mixing it together. It's just, that area's been identified. It all just goes right over in that hole.
But this is a deeper pit from where you're taking it from, so the surface area is greater, the prior location.
Right, we'll be taking it from shallower water, correct.
So hypothetically, if it's because it's, well, I understand what you're saying. So if, if you're dropping sediment in there, or perhaps you're done for the day, and there's a storm event or major change of tide, and I'm swimming through this area, is, is there any harm to me?
There wouldn't be any harm to you, because the, the pit, I believe, is what, 45 feet deep? 47 feet deep? So the material is down 47 feet below. Even in the final phases of the project, the highest point that material might be, priority putting on the cap, might be at a minus 20 or so, minus 30 feet.
So, that makes sense. So it starts 40-ish, and then it goes up. Let's say there's some sort of storm event or great, you know, tidal activity, and it's close to the brim at that point.
Right.
And I'm swimming through.
Right.
And it's being kicked up, or Caruso decides to cruise through with his mega boat, and it's kicking up some of this stuff. Is there, is it going to be any harm to me?
Well, I don't think there's going to be a harm to you. I think that one of the issues is that, that, I think that during the construction of this project, you would definitely not want the site being traversed by large vessels, so I'm sure that the site would be blocked off, so you wouldn't have something like the Invictus going through this area, just because it's going to be an active construction work area. But for that material to be actually picked back up into the water column to where you could be exposed, swimming would, would be some type of a catastrophic, catastrophic event. I don't even know how that would happen. There's models that calculate how deep down a scour can occur, like in a wind wave event or under tidal events. You know, when a wave passes through an area, it scours down to a certain depth and then could potentially pick that material up and suspend it into the water column, and this is orders of magnitude below where those depths are for any wind wave event you would see in the harbor. Once that material drops down there, it's going to start consolidating. Once that material drops down there, it's going to start consolidating. It's not going to get resuspended. The only thing that could potentially resuspend it is if something like a tugboat was tearing up through that area, which again, this would be flagged as an active construction area.
Just aside, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, from our discussions at the EPA, we asked those questions when we were in San Francisco, and they told us, there's no problem with the material in place. Again, I get into these paper limits and where they're at. So if you're one or two parts per million, think of those million ping pong balls, again, you're swimming in that, you might have two of those parts. I'm not an expert in lead, or excuse me, mercury, that's what the constituent of concern is here, but I think it's more about ingestion. We do have, Shelley here's a scientist, might be able to answer that. We could get something like that, but I don't know if there'd be a health concern. Now, if you're going to drink it, remember, you've got to drink that one ping pong ball, and how much accumulation, bioaccumulation it's going to cause. Be probably short-term. Long-term, they talk about swordfish eating a lot of it long-term. Yeah, you might have some, because sometimes it's higher than 1.0, so that helps.
Excuse me, Dave, this might be a good time to also reiterate that the material did pass all the toxicity tests. I think that's an important point. All the biological tests that they did on the mussels and fish and all the critters that they use, it did pass those tests. But the EPA was just concerned about the quantity that would be going out to LA3.
I'm kind of giving you a softball question, and I'm painting a picture where I'm not looking for, oh, that wouldn't happen because X, Y, and Z. I'm giving you a hypothetical that could happen, if you can imagine just a little bit of the sediment being kicked up in some fashion, perhaps a little bit outside of a construction blocked-off zone.
Right.
And someone's swimming through it. It seems to me that if your claims are that it's not a problem, it's just a disposal issue, that there would be no harm to someone who is passing through. So I guess I'm, and you might not have.
There's no greater risk to swimming near this one that's being constructed of any material being carried up that's any different than a wind event in the afternoon in the summertime in the harbor where sediment is picked up and suspended. Because keep in mind, this is the same sediment that's out there right now on the surface that's getting suspended. If anything, placing it down in the hole and having it 20 feet from where the wind wave event would be, you're going to have less material being suspended up into the water column.
Okay, that's interesting. So if I'm Pat Dixon, I swim in the harbor all the time, I'm an avid harbor person, and I were to swim over a part of the regions that you've dedicated as beige, I believe? Is that the color used?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, olive.
Olive, okay, olive. I'm passing over an olive area, and for some reason, sediment's being kicked up there for whatever reason.
Correct.
That could pose the same harm to me of that existing risk as another individual passing over this area we're talking about where sediment is being.
I think you make a good point. They're prop washed from a boat that just went over one of those areas, you'd have the same risk, because it would be stirred up and you'd swim through it, so.
But the risk, what I'm trying to get though is your opinion is the risk is the same?
The risk is the same, and it's important to note what the current risks are in the harbor right now. So the question keeps coming up about, if the material's not toxic, why can't it go out to the ocean? Why do they have these numbers fixed in the ocean? When EPA permitted and developed these ocean disposal sites, they had to conduct a risk assessment and try to figure out, what can we allow to go out here? And how much material can we allow to go out there? They run, it takes them years to develop these sites. They run tons of studies, they do a lot of risk assessments, they do a lot of different type of computer modeling, and they come up with what they think is a safe volume. They'll say, we think we can accept a million cubic yards per year, and let's set a really low threshold concentration for each of those chemicals to make sure that we don't have an issue of creating chemical bioaccumulation or any types of risk. Because keep in mind, you're dredging material over a large surface area, and you're putting in a concentrated small spot out in the ocean. They don't want to take a potential problem and move it from one area and put it out and concentrate in the ocean and create a problem there. So they set these numbers there, and that's where the one part per million came from. In our negotiations or our discussions with EPA, we pointed out to them that we saw no effects from the material when we ran our biological tests. Just because you exceed a chemical concentration doesn't mean you're going to have a direct toxicology effect, an adverse response to an organism. There's a lot of other complicated factors that come into play, which make that chemical bioavailable, means that it's available to be uptake and affecting the organism. In this case, those concentrations that we tested at, at the site that you have existing out there, are not causing biological responses, are not causing a toxic response. If they were causing a toxic response out there, you guys would probably be hearing from EPA or the water board saying, you need to go out and actively clean up these areas. You'd be given a directive like a cleanup and abatement order to go do it, because in that sense, they would perceive it as an imminent either human health effect, a human health risk, or a risk to the aquatic environment, or the birds, for example. They go through and they actually evaluate the data that the city collects all the time. They're looking for those types of things. They're looking for that type of risk you just mentioned, the potential human health exposure of people swimming in the harbor. They don't see that in Newport Harbor. The only place in Newport Harbor they've ever come to the city and really pressured the city for an active cleanup has been in the Rhine Channel, and that's because you're dealing with much higher concentrations, and it's PCBs and mercury, which is their biggest concern in the Rhine Channel, way higher orders of magnitude of what you have here. Everywhere else in the harbor, they would like to see it cleaned up, but it's not at a point that is causing a risk. And that's why when Dave says, you can leave it there now, nobody's going to force you to come remove it. But if you're going to dig it up and you're going to move it over here, you're going to have to follow our set thresholds. Now, in our case, they were willing to relax those thresholds a little bit as a favor to the city in return for this project going forward, and that's why they allowed the one to the 1.5, because they see the benefit and the value of creating this CAD cell as a way to just get the whole harbor cleaned up all at one time, so. Sorry, I went off on a tangent there, but hopefully I explained.
Hope that answered it.
My objection was, I'm sorry, I'm still, I still have a witness, Your Honor? Thank you. My objection would be, you still didn't answer the question. Am I safe traveling through the area if there's sediment kicked up, regardless of whether or not it's the same as some other location in the harbor?
Yes, I believe that you are, and I think that if you weren't, that the city would be under a forced cleanup of the harbor right now, because the sediment's kicked up almost every afternoon when the winds kick up.
That's exactly what we heard from the EPA. We were sitting at the table, they said, we aren't concerned of it right now, otherwise we would have given you a cleanup abatement order when we were in San Francisco. So I think your question is, yes, you're safe as you would be as you're swimming in the Rhine Channel or anywhere else in the harbor.
Yeah, so, and I'm asking for two reasons. Well, one, we like it in English. Thank you for laying out your credentials, clearly know what you're talking about, but people want to hear, I think, colloquially, if what the answer is. And two, there are two concerns that I'm hearing that are both relevant. One is what happens during the transitionary period, the construction period we're talking about, where it seems like exposure would be piqued? And then, what happens if someone doesn't want to believe that they believe, or that they accept your assertion that the field cap is going to actually stay in place and that it's going to somehow shield them? Well, the answer seems like your, it seems like your answer would be, it doesn't even need to shield you, because it's safe without the cap, but we're going to put the cap on anyways. Does that sound accurate?
That is accurate, but one of the things that, one of the things that the agencies are very concerned about is they want that final surface condition to look as pristine as possible. In their mind, when this project is done, they want the surface sediments that are out there, the top exposed layer, to look like what would naturally be occurring in Newport Harbor in the absence of all chemicals.
And that's for the benefit of, you know, sea creatures and swimmers and everyone, but if, in the case that someone's worried it's not going to last, or that something might happen during the construction, you're not concerned about public safety during that time?
I'm not concerned about it, no.
Thank you.
So right now, at low tide, when large boats go up the channel over the contaminated areas, if you will, those props are very close to the bottom. They're pushing it all around everywhere, and that happens all the time. I mean, the boats that live at the Bay Club are 100 to 130 feet long, they draw seven, eight feet, big props, and they're going up the channel, and that's what's happening now, right?
Yes, that material's resuspended, and then will drift with the currents and settle back out in some radius around that area, correct?
And so does our sampling pick that up floating around the water, Chris? Or do we don't, do we do, we're doing water sampling at different depths?
For the water quality sampling, you mean during construction?
Right.
We.
Or even now in the bay, just random sampling.
I'll let Steve answer that one.
The city doesn't do targeted sampling to look at resuspension events like that from ships, but for a project like this, when you have an active construction project, you do have a very, very controlled water quality monitoring program that looks at collecting samples when they, right after the barge drops the material at a radius around the disposal cell, to test the material, to look for whether or not it's got sediment resuspended, and then if it does have the sediment over a threshold, then they make you send that sediment, filter it, and send it to a lab and analyze it chemically to see whether or not that exceeds the predicted concentrations that we told the agencies that it was going to have. And they always have a requirement in there that basically, if they're seeing results that don't match what we told them we were going to get, that they can put a stop to the project or make you alter it. Usually what you do when you hire a contractor is you put BMPs, best management practices, you put guidance in there that says and lets the contractor know, because nobody really wants the project to go on hold, because it gets very expensive quickly. So what you do is you put in things like silk curtains and stuff like that, or you force the contractor to slow down, or even tighten up their disposal window more narrowly than what you're allowing them to, for example, when you start. And those are all things that get triggered if you start seeing anything real-time that doesn't match what you were expecting.
Less than increase in the testing protocol, I would imagine.
Correct, and the testing programs are phased as well. You always start out, and in fact, the monitoring that's going on out there right now, we have crews out there that are sampling the dredging project you guys have going on the entrance channel. Every time the contractor moves from one work area to another work area, even across the channel, it triggers a five-day daily water quality monitoring program. And if we see any results in those five days that cause suspicion, you know, they set a threshold, and they say, if you exceed over these, then you've got to monitor every day. If you don't, and everything looks good, and the contractor's doing what they said they're going to do, then you can relax it to like one day a week, for example, where you just randomly go out and check on the contractor.
So who's the sheriff? Who?
The water board.
The water board. They get the results and then?
The water board gets the results. They, you have a negotiated water quality monitoring plan, it's prior to the project that lays out all the what-ifs, so what's going to happen if the project goes sideways, if you see results you weren't expecting that you predicted and you told them. You have triggers for having to, like I said, put in place BMPs. If those still get exceeded, then they have the ability to stop the project until you come up with a solution.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon.
A couple of simple questions. Did I hear when you were talking to Mr. Muldoon, did it say that once this is the bottom of scrape and the material is placed into the CAD, the entire Newport Harbor will be nearly in its original organic status before man? Are we eliminating all non-man-made materials?
No, remember, this project only dredges the federal channels, so there will be areas, for instance, if you look at the RGP.
Well, at least in the areas that we dredge.
In the areas we dredge, it'll be down to the bottom depths that they originally dredged to. So I guess whatever's under there, God put there, I don't know. There are other areas, though. We have one Baboy Yacht Basin that has some concerns of material in there, and we should probably dredge that when the CAD's open and move it over there, too.
Okay, one question any one of you gentlemen could answer. If you live within 25 yards of the, would you live within 25 yards of the CAD? Yes or no?
Yes.
If I could afford to, yes. I would.
Mr. Webb?
Just as an engineer, I'm not concerned, because the material's on the beach now, and my kids will be playing, and it's in the Rhine Channel, so it's the same material going. I don't have any problem with that. The fact that we're going to put clean material on this, the fact that mercury tends to go down, it's a heavy metal, not up, I don't see the concern here, but I wouldn't have a problem with it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you quickly explain how you go about testing for, testing the sediment for toxicity with the planning the animals and?
So when you characterize the material, the agencies look for a couple of different things to determine whether or not it's suitable to go to the ocean. Like I said, there's a chemical test where you just collect the samples, you send them to a laboratory, and they give you an absolute number. Your mercury concentration is this, your copper concentration's that. Then what they do is they have you subject the sediment to a series of tests that are trying to simulate different exposures in the environment, and they're trying to look for potential effects eventually to people, or to wildlife, or to, it's called, there's two things called a direct effect and an indirect effect. A direct effect would be like mortality. You put the sediment in a little jar in a laboratory, you add some little animals to the jar, like amphipods, little, they look like little crustaceans, and you wait 10 days, and you look to see whether or not they're still alive. That's a pretty direct effect. If you put 20 of them in there and only 10 are left, you've got 50% mortality. Then there's what's called an indirect effect, which means that it may not kill the animal immediately, but it's not good for it, because it could affect things like reproduction. So they have a whole series of tests that look at potential material that's, they take the sediment, and you look to see whether or not chemicals are leaching from the sediment into the water, and then you take that water and you test it to things like an oyster or mussel, and you see whether or not they can reproduce, and whether or not they produce normal eggs, you know, for fertilization and stuff like that. So that's what's called an indirect test. Then there's a test that looks at the next level up and saying, okay, well, maybe the animal reproduced it, maybe it didn't die right away, but is it transferring these chemicals like mercury and PCBs in their tissues to the point where it might not affect this fish, it might not even affect the fish that eats him, but what about the bird or the person that eats two or three levels up on the fish? And did that mercury or DDT or PCBs accumulate? And that's a bioaccumulation test, and that's where you actually take animals and expose them to the sediment. You let them run typically 30 days, and then you measure the chemicals in the tissues of the clams, for example, and you compare that to the concentrations of the chemicals that were at the beginning of the test, and you look to see whether or not they accumulate a certain amount of chemicals. And then they actually have regulatory standards that say, if your accumulation is over a certain amount, that means you may have a potential human health or a higher level ecological risk, then that could kick you out of an unsuitability determination. In this case, we ran the test, the chemistries came back, and they were above those threshold absolute numbers that the EPA allows for disposal of the harbor. All the biological tests passed. The bioaccumulation test passed, everything passed, and we had zero effects in the test. That's why we're using the terms by saying, we don't believe it's toxic material, because it wasn't, didn't produce a toxic response. But nonetheless, the concentrations are still above EPA's threshold out at the ocean disposal site. They're very tough, very rigid, it's a black and white. In this case, like I said, they were willing to come back and say, we recognize the good of the harbor, we recognize the fact you didn't have any toxicity, we're going to relax those limits a little bit from the 1 to 1.5, because that was sort of a threshold that when they went from 1 to 1.5, it went from 270,000 yards of material needing to be disposed of to only 100,000. So it was sort of like this max threshold. Now, I'm sure they probably, they didn't share it with us, but they probably looked at it and said, well, what if we let them go up to 1.6, or what if we made them go to 1.3? They probably looked at different numbers, and they probably decided, okay, we can live with 1.5, we can justify it internally that we're not going to contaminate the ocean disposal site, and this is going to provide a real bang for the buck for them by allowing them to save $800,000 in disposal and put some of that stuff out in the ocean. I hope that explained it.
Mr. Blahm.
Thank you. So I'm not nearly as familiar about any of this as Mayor Avery and Mr. Duffield here. So this material is already sitting in our harbor, just a quick clarification, right? It's there. If we do nothing, it's still there, propellers bring it up, same issue. So the EPA, which I imagine is not the easiest regulatory board to deal with, wants us to do this. Is that correct?
All, I think all regulatory agencies would want the city to manage the sediment, and I think that unfortunately in our region, that we just don't have a lot of options. And I think this is an option, it's a technology that's already been proven in other harbors, so we know technically it can be constructed safely, and that it provides a long-term management solution. I think they look at it as an opportunity to get the harbor back to its original state.
Wonderful. I mean, I think we're in compliance with one of the hardest regulatory bodies in the federal government. The material's already sitting in our harbor. We found the ability to do something with it that moves it and builds it, puts it deeper. It seems like a win-win across the board for us, and I just, you know, I guess my question is, is the debate right now that we want to leave it in the harbor and not dredge? Or just that we want to look towards other alternatives that the EPA hasn't yet looked at for us? So I guess my question is, you know, I'm not really sure why we wouldn't do this. I think this seems like something we've already run it through the regulatory boards, we've run it through the systems, and it's not necessarily easy to comply with federal government. I think they're actually the hardest people on us, so this sounds like, I mean, there's been an excessive amount of due diligence done at that table, and I appreciate you gentlemen for that. And, you know, I understand the concerns of the residents, that they're nervous about what's in the harbor, but it's already in the harbor. We're not taking anything and putting it into the harbor, this is already sitting there, maybe on the top level at this point, maybe with a rotor, as Muldoon pointed out, every[1790.50] time a boat goes by, or every time anyone pulls up their own dredging. So this just seems like a solution rather than a debate. So I guess, are there other options we're considering, or is this pretty much it? Because this sounds like a great plan that's been well-vetted, and, you know, I'm fully for.
To that point, just, there have been comments about other options, and I just wanted you to know that, being on this so many years and with the experts here, many table talks we've had, we remember going to the EPA basically talking about, hey, I mean, we jokingly said, you think we can build a new island? We're in California, folks, you know, Kelsey Commission won't let me put a pile in the ground without mitigating it. In China, you can do that, it's not a viable option here. Can we take this material outside the international waters and drop it? I don't think the treaties, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, I think it's just, EPA's going to go no way. So some of those options go away right away. We looked at trucking, which was the probably most viable, very expensive. I don't know if we can do the project, and, you know, the money, we've been trying to get for five and six years now to get the Fed to give us money. I don't, we've got to 8 million now, I don't know what we're going to get. How much is the trucking option? Do you guys remember? I mean, that number was 21 million. I mean, then you still got, that's dredging it, and then 21 million to truck it off and dispose it. Those are big numbers, I don't think the project goes that way. So you're right, you're probably, you're keen in on that, you probably have two choices now. You can leave this material in place and hope we can deal with it some other time and some other way, and I don't know when that is, because the window of the regulatory and the money and everything's right now. And remember, if you have a smaller material, here's just a quote that I learned in the dredging process, I've learned a lot in here, too. Just to bring the dredge down from up north, it's a million bucks just to mobilize that thing and bring it down here. So if you have 100,000 yards in the harbor, just to get that dredger, you're paying 10 bucks a yard just to get it here. Now you're going to move it again. So if you've got a small amount of material, are we going to be able to go back to this and fix it? Again, I'm the engineer here saying, I don't think so. So you're probably going to leave it in place, or you're going to take care of it. And the options are, the experts have looked at, the EPA said, your CAD's probably the best, safest thing you can do, and that's why we're here tonight.
Dave, could I just add to that? So there's been a lot of comments about the alternatives, and that, you know, one of them is, you know, why didn't we consider the CDF? A CDF is a confined disposal facility, confined disposal facility. Basically, it's where you go along your shoreline, and you essentially just pick a part of your shoreline, it could be an indentation or something, or it could be the Rhine Channel, for example. You could go up to the Rhine Channel and go about, you know, just past where the cannery is, and basically just build a wall, build a new wall, put all the sediment behind it, and essentially create land. I mean, that's what a CDF is, it's basically a landfill that you build along your shoreline that would come up above the water. We didn't consider that in Newport Harbor, we, I mean, we did consider it early on, but we eliminated it because there's not a lot of undeveloped space around Newport Harbor to essentially separate off a couple hundred feet by a couple hundred feet and create new land. You're filling in tidallands of the state, so there's a, good luck getting that through the Coastal Commission and the mitigation requirements of doing that. From a contaminant standpoint, it's no better than putting the material underground. In fact, I would argue that it's safer to put it in a CAD cell because you have less opportunity for that material to actually leach horizontally and come back out through your walls into the, into the bay, because you're burying it and there's really nowhere for it to go. So the CDF was considered, but we eliminated it very early on, we just didn't see it as a feasible alternative anywhere in Newport Harbor. The other option is, you know, why didn't we just find somebody who was willing to take the material and go use it beneficial, like on a construction site upland? Well, number one, the impacts to the, to the community really are the same as going to a landfill, the only difference is you're not going to pay the tipping fee to the landfill. You've still got to dig it up, you got to de-water it, you got to put it in trucks, you're still looking at 8,000-plus trucks leaving the site to go somewhere to take the material. But the bigger issue has to do with liability. And this issue was evaluated 20 years ago when the, these dredging agencies developed essentially the manual for how you manage contaminated sediments in the region, and one of those options they considered was what they called a soil broker, somewhere where you could give them your contaminated sediment and let them go manage it upland, somewhere where it wouldn't be considered as contaminated, like a, like a development site. And the issue comes down to the liability of that material. The City of Newport Beach would be forever the owners of that material regardless of where it goes and regardless of where it's used. 20 years from now, if some developer used that material and it contaminated the groundwater, or it was used inappropriately in a housing development and somebody had an issue with it, the City of Newport Beach would forever be liable for it. And this should be evident if folks were here during the 2012 timeframe when you guys took the material up the Port of Long Beach. You guys had to sign a contract with the Port of Long Beach that said if anything ever goes wrong with this material, you guys will forever be on the hook on it. Now, I'm sure the city's lawyers reviewed it and probably determined that it was a pretty low risk because they were going to bury it under 20 feet of concrete and create a terminal. But if you just provide this material to somebody who takes it without the control of where it's going to end up, you don't have a way of controlling that liability. So for that reason, again, we considered it, but we eliminated it as not feasible early on.
So when it's in the vault, and I'm using the word because one of the definitions of a vault is an underground storage area, and the cap is on the vault, it's inert, right?
Yeah, when you, when you design the CAD cell, there's actually quite a bit of science that goes into it, and you have to think about what's, what could potentially allow that material to come back out and leak its way essentially back out. You have to have something that's going to force it out of the ground. And typically, what that problem would be is groundwater. If you built, like, for example, a CAD cell in an area where you know have groundwater upwelling into your, your embayment, you wouldn't want to bury your contaminated material there, or anything with chemicals in it, because there's always a risk that that material could leak out into the, the water around the mud, and then the groundwater could kind of push it up out of it. We don't have that situation in Newport Harbor. We've looked at the geology of it, we looked at the hydrology, that was part of the basis of design report that EPA reviewed for the city to make sure that we essentially did it properly. That's been one of the concerns that every one of the CAD cells has been built. Port Wayneemi was the most difficult, we actually placed the Port Wayneemi material between two different aquifers, so there's an upper one and a lower one. We built the CAD right in between the two of them so that we wouldn't have groundwater going through it. That's really the only way that material's going to come out. There's no other way that it's going to essentially get pushed up out of the ground through the cap. And we also model it, too, and have to prove to the agencies that we've evaluated and considered it.
Probably most harbors in the West Coast have contaminated sediment.
Most do, yeah.
I mean, San Diego with all the Navy operations.
Right.
Any commercial harbor, LA, San Pedro.
Right.
I imagine Santa Barbara's pretty nice, but, you know, Port Wayneemi for sure, right? Navy's there.
Right. So in the other harbors, the ports try to manage the material themselves by building terminals. They try to wait until they have an available terminal that they can create a large slip fill or CDF like the Middle Harbor one that you guys took advantage of. In San Diego, what they're doing with a lot of their material is they're drying it and trucking it to a landfill that's about 50 miles away. They're offloading it onto port facilities and de-watering, that was some of the photos that Chris showed. It's a very different environment because you're offloading it and to industrial port properly, and then you're going with the material directly on the highway, and you're taking it to the Ojai landfill, which is down on the Mexican-California border. But other than that, most people have solved their problems with the CAD cells.
And how thick is the lid on the CAD?
Yeah, in this, in this situation, what we proposed to the agencies was a three-foot cap, and the way that that's designed is there's different factors that go in there. You have to consider, what is the depth that animals living in the harbor, like crabs, dig down, because you wouldn't want them to dig through that clean area and get down into the material buried below it. You look at what the potential is for a wind wave or a prop wash to scour that material, and you usually do all these different things. You look for the greatest of any possible way that it could get scoured down, and then you either take it and you double it, or you triple it as a safety factor, and that's how you set your depth.
And then the water above it would be a no anchorage area?
Well, I think that what we do is we model in those anchorage up to a certain event, so you would have to decide what size anchors. If you guys were going to allow a boat with, you know, a massive anchor to drag in there, then you might want to say, okay, well, we're going to add an extra foot. One thing I will mention is that when the Port of Long Beach is looking at their CAD facility that they're working on the permitting for right now, this was a big concern because their CAD is actually in an open anchorage area for the tankers, and they did an anchor scour study there using the actual anchors with the, from an entire container ship, and they found out that it actually didn't penetrate any deeper. So it was like a one and a half foot penetration for one of those boats. Because they rely mostly on weight, they don't drag.
Right.
You just said that Long Beach is...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Duffy. First of all, I want to let you guys, I've been working with these guys for a long time, and I know they think I'm nuts, and, and I'm a creative guy. I am probably too creative for my own good, and it's cost me a lot of money in my, in my development of things. So when I sit in front of these guys, they, they listen to me, and I can see in their faces, they go, what the hell is he talking about? So when somebody says to me, well, have you thought of this, have you thought of that? I'm going to tell you. We've thought of a lot of weird stuff, and I can't even remember how much, how many weird things, but one of, one of the things I wanted, I was all bottled up with us using centrifugal force and building a machine out there on a barge that would separate this stuff without having to go through this drying process and all this and that. I mean, honestly, we've really thought about a lot of different alternative methods, and, you know, I'm, I have to say, every time I come up with a different weird idea, these guys have great, they're great to push off of, and, and they're open-minded, and they, they think about it for a second, and they, and then they give me a response that I don't like to hear, because it won't, Duffy, that won't work. And so we, we start off again, and we've been doing that for years. And sometimes I don't like what they say, and sometimes I go out of the room and I'm, I'm mad at them, and I want to hire somebody else, because, well, let's get somebody who will do something, you know, really creative. But, you know, our hands are tied in so many ways, and so many restrictions, with so many agencies, to achieve an okay from all of these, because we have to, we have to have okay from every single different angle, from wildlife, you name it, upside down and backwards. And I have to say that I believe in my heart of hearts, we have thought of every conceivable method, maybe we, how about burning it, incinerating it? I, I mean, come on, we've really thought about all these things, and I'm a nut that way, so I feel very confident that what we have come up with, they have come up with, I would fully endorse, and I'm very, I'm very proud of how hard these guys have worked and how diligent they are, and I just, I'm, I'm all for this thing, and I'm, I'm proud to be a part of it. Thanks.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes, thank you. You mentioned that Long Beach is currently building a new CAD?
They're currently working to permit a CAD of an existing harvest, sand harvest area that's offshore of their facility, yeah.
Is there any way we can, I'm sure you've explored this, we go to the next level of exploring something where we could lease space from Long Beach CAD? I mean, we had that relationship 10 years ago.
Yeah, the city already approached them on it and asked, and it's, in this situation, it's strictly for the Port of Long Beach for them to use. It's actually two holes that they have, that they've used for harvesting sand, they're going to keep one of them mostly for clean material, one of them potentially for contaminated material. They actually don't even have projects designated to use it, they just would like to have it at their disposal, quote, for...
They're just storing sand, is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yeah, what they do is they take sand and they actually store sand offshore, like sometimes they need sand for like a fill site, like just to put on top of it to help squeeze all the water out, they call it surcharge, and when they're done with it, sometimes they put it back out in the water and they just let it sit there, and then they go back out and get it when they need it. But in this, in this instance, the permitting approach that they're taking on it is strictly for them to be able to use it themselves, and it's, and it's still probably years away from being permitted as well. Just quickly, to Duffy's comment about the centrifugation, just so you know, that's not entirely a crazy idea, and the Corps of Engineers studied that for many years. I don't, I think you might be in the other room listening, Jim Fields with the Corps of Engineers is here somewhere, but he led a series of pilot studies that the Corps of Engineers did in the region for about four to eight years to look at the idea of centrifuging the sand and using different mechanical equipment to separate out the fine-grained material, which is where the contaminants are usually at, from the sand, so that the sand could go on the beach, and then you would concentrate your contaminated material to take it to a landfill. Unfortunately, it worked well in a really small scale, like in a laboratory, but they actually did a very large field-scale project at Marina Del Rey, and, and unfortunately, it was, it was a little too difficult on a larger scale to do. So it's not an entirely crazy idea, that it got tried, and the Corps spent about $5 million testing it to figure out it didn't really work very well.
So we're looking to get your approval tonight on this environmental document, and happy to stay around. Obviously, public comments next, so we'll be here to answer any questions if you'd like.
Okay. Any other council questions, comments? All right. We'll go out to the public.
Good evening, Mayor Avery, members of the City Council. My name is Bill Kenny, I'm the current chairman of your Harbor Commission. At our April 14, 2021 Harbor Commission meeting, we held a public hearing to review the Lower Newport Bay Confined Aquatic Disposal Construction Project, or CAD as we know it, final environmental impact report for that CAD. At the conclusion of the public hearing, Harbor Commission voted 6 to 0 with one abstention to recommend to the City Council that they adopt and certify the EIR. During the public testimony at the Harbor Commission, there was testimony that maybe the private sector could fund taking some of these materials to a land-based fill site instead of the CAD. Now, the EIR did analyze an alternative of transporting contaminated materials to a land-based fill site, as Chris has said, but determined that due to a significant increase in cost and other environmental issues, that alternative was not feasible. However, based upon the public testimony at our meeting, the Harbor Commission created an ad hoc committee to study the suggestion made that land-based disposal of contaminants could be possibly privately funded. And as Chris said, the cost is very, very significant. It was made abundantly clear, however, that because the Army Corps of Engineers has commenced dredging in the federal channels in the Lower Bay, that adoption and certification of the EIR could not be delayed. Now, the dredging project, which is the subject of the EIR before you this evening, will remove contaminated material from the bottom of the bay, which, as we've heard, could otherwise be disturbed by boat prop wash, wind and tidal action, or other actions, and then suspend it in our water table. The project will help replenish our ocean beaches. It will bring our harbor decks back to the federal levels and make our harbor safer for navigation. It will enhance tidal action, which will have a beneficial effect on eel grass growth, and it will allow for further reduction of contaminants, as Chris has mentioned, as residents dredge contaminated materials from under their docks. This project has gone through extensive environmental and public outreach, as has been testified. It's gone through review by all of the required federal, California, and regional jurisdictions. Significant federal funding has been secured. It's now time to act. It is critical that this City Council adopt and certify the EIR, that is before you this evening, so that the dredging of this project can move forward on schedule. And we also have this evening from the Harbor Commission, Commissioner Ira Beer, who is the chair of the ad hoc committee on the land, public, or the private financing of the land. Thank you.
Anyone else with public comment, please come forward.
My name is Brent Martin, and I'm with a small environmental firm that's working with the homeowners and the ad hoc committee to look at reasonable alternatives to the CAD as presented. I don't think ultimately that the CAD is a bad idea, it's... It's just not the best idea or the most creative idea that could have been presented to this council, to the Harbor Commissioners, and to the City of Newport Beach. As a representative of Team Palmer, Palmer has basically committed to funding a private alternatives investigation, looking at things that address the same concerns that you're worried about: water quality, long-term environmental health, communal benefits, and costs. So all those things need to be addressed. It's not an easy process, but I can tell you that in the last 15 years since the CAD has been introduced, there's really been no other ideas who have that have made it beyond that, oh, well, we looked at it, we just thought it was infeasible. There's been $2.5 million spent on digging the hole, and there has been very little looked at possible CDF alternatives and some things that, you know, are are reasonable alternatives to the CAD. So a lot of the comments that have come up that that the homeowners have made are, you know, this is in our backyard, there's plumes of DDT that could be released, uh, that this is not the longest term solution, and it doesn't address all the stuff in the bay. Now, we've heard some things, and some comments have been backed off on by the city, which is that we won't ever have to dredge again. This is the 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 whole enchilada here. A lot of that stuff has kind of gone away. But we are optimistic that there is an alternative. We've talked to some of the stakeholders in Newport Beach about the stuff that we're doing now, including some of the nonprofits, and they're very surprised at the progress that we're making, the ideas that we're coming up with, and the places that we're thinking about doing things that have not been investigated previously, at least not by the records and the things that we have seen. So sometimes it takes an outside spark to come up with the right solution and not just a solution. And so that's what we're trying to do, is be that outside spark to make sure that the city is actually getting a fair shake on this and that they're getting the best possible sediment management option available. You know, the City of Newport Beach is amazing. I I work there a lot, you know, as Steve Capellino mentioned, I wish I could afford a house on the beach, too. But, you know, it's a wonderful place, and it's someplace that deserves a very creative and innovative approach to managing its long-term sentiment, something that might actually have some real communal benefits at the end, you know, that you could monetize or that you could use for longer-term sediment management alternatives. Those are the things we're looking at right now. We didn't see a lot in that of that in the draft EIR. We didn't see a lot of that in the discussions with the public meetings. Uh, we heard CAD, we heard CAD, we heard a sediment management plan that came after the CAD. Usually that plan's kind of your overarching document, and everything kind of filters into that plan. It's kind of like when you build a house. You don't go build a house and then go back and do the blueprints. You pull up the blueprints, you develop the plan, and then you build the house, right? So there's a lot of things that are kind of taken out of order. I think part of that is because there's been a focus on the CAD. So we're going to try to help you guys find an off-ramp here in the next 60 days that can provide you a real alternative that might actually answer some of these questions and keep a landfill, you know, because that's how it's permitted, right? It's like landfill. Keep a landfill out from in front of these homeowners' houses. You know, so these guys might not want to want to live there, but that's not their just, you know, in front of a CAD, but they don't actually own the houses where the CAD is going in front of, right? These guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mayor Avery and council members. My name is Dave Rhodes. I live at 110 Via Quito. I'm also a business owner in the city. I have expressed my concern over this CAD placement in a letter about a year and a half ago to staff, and I wanted to make a couple of points tonight, not all of those points I put in the letter. But as mentioned by the consultant tonight, the one place that you would not put or the detriment putting a CAD there is the depth of water that's in that area and that part of the plume. So I would ask you simply to understand that the plume itself, as you have to move around this this large area here, can be dispersed. You know that that there's 11,000 drops minimum just with a 1,000 just with a 100,000 cubic yards, another 50,000 cubic yards makes it to 1,700 drops, 17,000 drops that you're going to have. You can't really tell me or convince me that we're not going to have some dispersion around the area, and we have an awful lot of recreational activities that go in that place, a lot of boating activities, a lot of people sailing and and also the kayaks and swimming. So the other point you made is that, or Dave made, was that you have one ping pong ball that can go out to LA3, but two can't. Well, we're putting two right in the middle of that CAD. So we're trying to say that the the mercury isn't so bad, but obviously, it's bad enough to not go to LA3. So I'd ask you guys to consider not being a pioneer, not being the first place in the world to try a CAD so close and in the middle of Maine and Maine, as I said in my letter, so close to residents here. You're pioneering when you do that. I'm an architect. I do a lot of creative work. I have to convince my clients a lot of times, let's try this. I listen to all the arguments, and you can listen to them and be convinced, but in reality, no one knows. You don't know either right now, and tell it, so don't pioneer, please. Thank you.
Allow for mic adjustment for me. Hi, I'm Shawna Councilman, and I have come before this council before all except for welcome the new council member, Blom. I have not spoken in front of him before. I am a Newport Beach resident, a taxpayer, and I like to think of myself as an involved citizen. I am pro dredging. And from the first informational meeting I was invited to, I have tried to wrap my arms around the idea of the CAD. My message is simple. When we address an issue as serious as what to do with toxic materials, yes, toxic plumes of DDT being released while moving them, not removing them, then put while moving them, not removing them, but moving them to a clean bay to create an aquatic landfill in the middle of our residential recreational harbor. We need to take the time to explore every option in its entirety. That has not been done. From the onset of the first meeting I attended, the only thing that was represented was a CAD, and it was also represented to me as a vault. And my first question was, explain what a vault is to me underneath 47 feet in a 450 square foot area? So 47 feet deep, 450 foot square that our boats now enjoy and anchor in? And we know, we drag anchors. I watch them all day long. Not everyone's an expert anchor person, let me tell you. So, you know, you get the wrong person out there, and that anchor is not going to be placed perfectly. So according to the Army Corps of Engineers, the CAD is not a condition of dredging, although that is the implication that is always said. And according to the California EPA San Ana Regional Water Quality Board representative that called into the Harbor Commission Zoom last month, and I quote, "The City of Newport Beach is attempting to downplay the severity of the contamination." So that's from the Water Quality Board. I'm not an expert, we all know that. Most of you know where I live, which is right in front of the CAD, and that's not really the point for me. I enjoyed watching the dredging in 2012. I don't have any problem with the noise factor or how big those things are or how long it takes. I'm all about the dredging, but I am never going to be able to think it's okay to take the contaminated materials, whatever you want to call them, and take them all and confine them in our beautiful, clean anchorage. I just think there are better options, and I think we need to take a little more time to explore them. And had this been not just pushed as a CAD constantly from the beginning, perhaps we would have had the opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Avery, Council. My name is Carson Hill. I am a proud citizen of Newport Beach, and I am a proud business owner of Newport Beach, in Newport Beach. I'm in favor of the CAD. I know that might not be the same as everyone here, but I think we've listened to the experts. I know Mr. Duffield has been on the Harbor Commission for many years before before joining the City Council, and I think that we have done a lot of research and studies for this to be a successful project. So please consider moving forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Jesse Salem, and I am the owner of Newport Harbor Shipyard, which I have operated for 32 years. I'm also the steward of the marine element of Lido Yacht Anchorage on Lido Peninsula. And I support the CAD for all the reasons that your your team has described. Councilman Dixon asked questions about the viability of moving boats through the Rhine Channel. We have challenges hauling boats or getting boats into the Rhine Channel at anything less than a positive four-foot tide, so the problem already exists. This year, we've repaired eight boats trying to get into the Rhine Channel due to lack of water and safe navigation. It it doesn't take a 120-foot boat to create trebidity in the bay. It takes a 30-foot or 40-foot boat at low tide, and you can see a wake like an airplane exhaust going down the Rhine Channel. And everybody is concerned about this CAD, but every time a boat goes down that channel, there's a significant amount of trebidity. And you're you're moving it, and and I see, I I've stared at that Rhine Channel for the last 32 years. Before we did the the dredging channel in 2012, and Lido Peninsula was sort of ground zero for the engineers, so it's pretty intimate with it. That channel was dead. You couldn't find a minnow in it. You couldn't find a piece of kelp in it. Last summer, we had yellowfin tuna swimming down that channel, and I I believe that that was a result of of the 2012 dredging project. What you all are trying to do is good for the bay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Sorry for sitting down. I meant no disrespect. I broke a toe on each foot in a motorcycle wreck a few weeks ago. I'm still recovering. My name is Palmer Lucky. I'm a resident on Lido. I do live about 25 yards from where the CAD is. I'm going to take my mask down if you don't mind. By the way, thank you, Mayor, Council. My dad used to tell me something growing up. He said, think like a problem solver, not a problem creator. I'll come back to that later, like the crazy guy at the beginning of the day. I watch people in the visitor moorings all day, every day. I'll be honest, that's where people do the stupid shit. That's where there are people who have no business operating a boat, operating a boat. They drop anchors in ways you've never seen. They do things you would never expect. I think back to what I've done in some of my boats, which are jet-powered, you know, jet jet-powered pump jet boats. They have a thrust reverser bucket, they shoot the thrust down when I'm at neutral. I think about the holes that I've dug when I've start up engines close to the sand, and I kind of know what I'm doing. Living in front of that guest mooring, I can tell you, there's a lot of people who don't know what they're moving doing. And when I hear there's going to be three feet and that's going to stop everybody, I say, man, I could blow that away in maybe one second, two seconds with my boat. I bet there's boats that could do it faster. You know, I wish that I'd been able to get involved earlier in this because, but unfortunately, when this CAD project started, I was still learning to read. You know, I I think that advances in technology have really made it possible to do this in better, cheaper ways. I think there's a lot of alternatives on both the CFD side, also foreign disposal side. You know, it was mentioned earlier, like, you know, oh, I think the treaties don't even allow you to dispose it in international waters. I actually disagree. I've been paying a team of experts and some of my lawyers to look into this. I could be wrong. I'm not being paid millions of dollars to figure this out, I'm just using my own money. But I'm pretty sure that there are actually ways to go about it, and the same goes with liability transfer. Yes, of course, if you sign an agreement with the City of Long Beach saying you're liable, then you're going to be liable. But if you sign a different agreement, one that says the recipient is liable, particularly if they're in a different country, it's a very different matter. I, you know, I'm I'm very interested in helping with this. This is, I I talked to the Harbor Commission meeting about that. I think that there's ways that we can do this better. I think there's ways we can do it cheaper. I think there's ways we can do it without not just spending more money now, but also long-term monitoring. It's worth noting, anchor does stand to make quite a bit of money. I don't know the anchor guys very well. I can't speak to their character or, you know, whether they're trying to just make money. But I am concerned about some of the precision of language, a lot of the stuff. Unfortunately, I don't have enough time to go on everything. It takes a lot longer to read an argument than to make it. But one one very small example, this example came up over and over again, five times, actually, about ping pong balls, the ping pong ball and then two ping pong balls. And unfortunately, it seems to have transferred even to other people who are accepting it as, you know, that's the way that it is. It was mentioned, if you fill this whole room with ping pong balls, that one ping pong ball would be the mercury, if it was at 1.5 parts per million. Well, actually, I did the very rough math, very conservatively. I'm pretty sure that if you cover just the floor space of this room with just one layer of ping pong balls, there'd actually be more than one ping pong ball on that one layer. As you can see, it would take much more than one layer of ping pong balls to fill this room. I'm pretty sure that estimate is off by orders of magnitude, orders of magnitude. It's the difference between me punching you once and punching you 100 times. I mean, you know, and and to be honest, I'm not actually worried about the mercury. I'll I'll admit, I'm mostly worried about the cost. I'm going to die of misuse of industrial solvents, not mercury. That's what's going to kill me. But when you were, when you think about that and you think about, you know, the mercury and the DDT and the PCBs, people are concerned about it, and I'm concerned that you guys are only hearing what you're what you're what you're. You're hearing what you're told. We're hearing what we're told. I'm very concerned about the lack of the precision of language. And I have to mention one more thing. It was mentioned, you know, oh, this ping pong ball, it's really just a ping pong ball of whatever, it's 100,000 cubic yards. I would like to note that the CAD is proposed, about 100,000 square feet or cubic yards. If that were the case, at the minimum contamination level of mercury of 1.5 parts per million, up to the 4.5 that we saw in some of the areas, that means you're talking about about 3,000 pounds to 9,000 pounds of mercury. Now, that's the biggest pair of balls I have ever heard of. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Anyone else want to follow Palmer?
Mayor Avery, Council members. I'm Ira Beer, one of your harbor commissioners, and I have had the opportunity to work with Mr. Lucky. And what I had done at the last Harbor Commission meeting in just a week or so ago, at the May 12th meeting, is I summarized to the commission the progress that we've made in meeting with Mr. Lucky and his team. So I'd like to, at a very high level, just summarize that for you for the benefit of each of you, that you can have that information. And Commissioner Yan and I, we met face to face with with Mr. Lucky and his team, and he provided some suggestions. We kicked them around, but nothing really was concrete at that time. Subsequently, we did have other conversations via telephone, and with his, I guess I'm not sure if Brent is an engineer, but one of his specialists who was up here this evening seems very knowledgeable. And we are encouraged by the work that he's doing and what he's taken on to try and assist and come up with alternatives. However, I wanted to be clear that during our meetings, it was confirmed that our discussions, if they are to continue, would run parallel with anything that his team would do, because we felt it critical that this council approve this EIR, this draft EIR, move forward. And anything that Mr. Lucky's team could do at some point in time, if it was compelling, it could come to the commission, it can come before the council, and we could look at evaluating it along the way, because there's a it's a long way to go to get permitted from this point forward and and get rid of this unsuitable material. So what if they go through this effort, they invest all this money, which is is great effort, but they don't come up with anything? What's happened? Well, if tonight you do not approve this, we'll be kicking the can down the road, and we'll be putting ourselves in a situation that currently at what's out there today based upon the experts, it's it's not ugly, okay? It's it's manageable, even to the extent today with a CAD, it's not considered toxic. I'm concerned, and I'm talking about myself, because I would like to say consequently that at the vote of the commission on the on the 12th of April, I was the only commissioner that abstained that evening. Because after hearing what Mr. Lucky had to say, I was compelled to say, like, let's look at this. You know, this this might have legs. We really need to investigate this further. And over this time, I've dug into it quite a bit deeper. And over this time, I've dug into it quite a bit deeper. And as a result of that, I still encourage the path that he's following, without a doubt, and his team. They are professionals. But now, I'm really feeling that this CAD needs to be approved while he's pursuing those avenues, because we don't want this to turn ugly. Because if it does, first of all, it's going to cost at least another million dollars just for mobilization. The way that the project is laid out now, the CAD is being done on the coattails of the major project. It's actually considered an option on the main contract. So the costs, I believe, are going to be in the, are estimated around $15 per cubic yard, thereabouts, versus the magnitude of maybe closer to 30. So by acting today, it puts the community in a position to take advantage of the best alternative that has been vetted out, should nothing else be found compelling. And I think that's really important to look at. And the last thing I'll say, thank you for letting me go over, and this has been said a couple of times, and I shake my head on this, is that right now, in fact, at a couple of Commission meetings, we've had people come in with photographs to show us when the vessels are coming up that federal channel, where you saw all those olive places with all this unsuitable material, is plumed all over the harbor, just from the vessels coming through. Now, this is on both sides of Lido. And, and with just due respect to all the citizens at Lido Island, which way is the current going when those plumes are popped up? It's converging both ways into the point at that east-turning basin where this CAD is going to be, where these residents are. So they're, they're experiencing that unsuitable material if it's being suspended through the water now, right now. If it's put into the CAD, it is contained. And I won't go into the great depth, but I do want to say that I do have some background on containing material in something similar to a CAD, so I understand, maybe better than most, that it is going to, it is contained. And for it to move out would take, as mentioned previously, some catastrophic event. I've been involved in projects where we had to put much severely toxin material into disposals that were next to rivers and streams in Idaho. And, you know, it's, when it's contained in there, and it's a fine material, as this mostly is, it consolidates, it becomes very heavy. Don't be fooled by the fact that it's underwater. It's very heavy. It sinks, it consolidates, it's capped. It would take a catastrophic, catastrophic event to release that. So I would urge that the city approve this. Let us continue to work together, see if we can come up with another alternative. But if we don't, we have a great option right now to, to clean up the harbor. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any, any other public comment? All right. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the, well, we have two zooms. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Lauren Chase, and I'm a staff attorney for Orange County Coastkeeper. I think we can all agree that we're all here discussing this at this hour, because we truly care about the city of Newport and about Newport Bay, and because we all want the best decision to be made for the bay. Dredging is important. Coastkeeper understands that, but it really needs to be done right. As presented to the council, the city's environmental impact report does not provide adequate information to empower the council to make the best decision for the bay. We're asking for more time and honest and open-minded engagement to review and discuss this and identify the best possible solution. We've been signing this project for months and have been consistently disappointed with how the process unfolded. We've submitted comment letters addressing the substance of the EIR, and in the interest of making this three-minute comment productive, I'm not going to rehash those comments in full, but I do want to make a few clarifications and highlight a few new developments this evening. One, as discussed by other commenters, our options are not a CAD or nothing. There's been almost a tunnel vision focus on the outcome of a CAD, and it doesn't appear that the city has adequately analyzed other possibilities, including just, for example, potentially a project at lower castaways. The city should allow time, even just a 90-day window, to let this and Mr. Lucky's projects be fully explored. If the city decides the CAD is the way to go, the EIR really needs to be revised to adequately analyze and mitigate for the full spectrum environmental impacts. For one, Coastkeeper is very concerned about a patch of invasive algae identified in the harbor known as Calypso prolifera. This algae was first sighted by a Coastkeeper-led dive team and was recently identified by NOAA, and the Southern California Calypso Action Team recently reformed and is currently working to fully identify the extent of Calypso prolifera in the harbor. We ask the city to just hit the brakes on this project for a moment and let more time and engagement be involved, or to make sure this process is done right, and that any impacts from Calypso are fully addressed and mitigated before the dredging and the construction even begins. The city claims that it did a detailed analysis, but from reviewing the EIR, though it is voluminous impagination, we know that it's full of holes and inconsistencies that present real concerns. And these are noted in full in our letter, but just by way of example, the city simultaneously concludes that there are no significant noise impacts on dolphins in the bay, but also that noise impacts are so severe that they act as a deterrent from being anywhere near their habitat. So that's just one example of some of the holes and issues we've observed with this process. We would be very interested in engaging with Mr. Miller and the city and trying to work towards a best possible solution on this. Unfortunately, for the DEIR review process, we were only provided with two additional days to account for 10 city holidays during that entire process. I myself went to the public library and tried to review a hard copy of the document, but was only given one hour at a computer to review this document because of COVID-related limitations, which are understandable, and it was available online. But again, this all speaks to why we need more time and engagement to really make sure we do this right. Anyway, thank you for your time this evening, and I hope we are able to work towards the best possible solution here.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This is Mary Buckingham, and in the interest of time, I will be... Hello?
Please, go ahead.
Am I? Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. In the interest of time, I will be brief. I live very, very close to this project, and I do understand dredging, and I'm all for it. I mostly have questions after reading the impact report, and perhaps it has been addressed somewhere. Or one of you would get in touch with me afterwards, Mr. Marty and Laura, Ira. I'm wondering what exactly this project, what it will look like every two years for six months, and is that in perpetuity, or for 10 years? There are the vibration, the hours, the lights, the noise, the sound, the punes. And I'm just curious about picturing the scowl, the barge, and the tug at 200 and 150 feet, and the various tugs. And I'm also wondering about that process of people getting permits and the flow of traffic coming into this six-month period. So if somebody can direct me where to get more information on that, or just to consider, I know that's more of a residential issue, but I know everybody likes to think of the tourists coming and the feasibility and bringing money into our town. But I think there should be a little bit of consideration for the citizens who have lived here a long time and, and love the city as well, are proud citizens, appreciate what all of you do. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you. Good night. Nobody in line, no other folks. Bring it back up here to the dais. Any council comments? Mr. Muldoon?
Thank you. You have to indulge me. We're in between some sediment hard place with this one. And appreciate everyone participating. I do have some questions first before I give my comments. What's the timeframe, again, for when this has to be commenced in order, or in order to receive the federal funding?
The anticipated timeframe would be, assuming we could get the permits by January or so of next year, we would also anticipate the funding to come from the federal government. We would know that by early next year or sooner. And then construction, in theory, if, if, if all of that aligned perfectly, would be sometime around this time next year, summer, maybe fall, perhaps, starting next year.
And this is, what we're approving tonight is a CEQA or is it an EIR?
It's an EIR.
It's EIR. It's, can it be challenged under CEQA?
I'm sorry?
Can it be challenged under CEQA, or any provisions?
It's got the normal CEQA challenges and things that come with it.
And what could that potentially look like?
I think I have to turn to Mr. Harp. Can you fill us in on what kind of challenges could happen under the CEQA process?
Well, yeah, so what you'd be proving tonight would be the final EIR, and that would be subject to a CEQA challenge. And there's a relatively short timeframe for that, but, you know, it could take up to a year to probably finish up litigating that.
So that could delay us a year. That would potentially endanger our funding, or would it, or would it be okay?
I don't know enough about the funding. I don't think you've got, I think you're, you're trying to line it up with the funding. I don't think there's a deadline for receipt of the funding.
Okay.
So there's various fundings. We have one, which is funding Phase 1 right now, and that's in the Corps' budget. There's another appropriation. I think it's 6.2 million that comes up to about 8 million total. That's in, in the approval process. The other things we're concerned about, Chris mentioned the sediment. Certain elements have timeframes on it, so if it's delayed too much, you've got sediment issues. We'd have to check with the agencies if they'd honor that sediment plan, or would they have to get new data or, you know, something of that matter.
So as long as we're moving forward, even if we have a CEQA challenge, we're probably still going to receive the federal funding?
Yes, the federal funding. I would, I don't think it'd be, I don't expect it'd be changed by that. And this happens all the time in Corps projects. You know, once in a while, they have a challenge, they have to work through that. In the meantime, they're still working on the permits and the design, everything like that, until the legal action's settled.
So how much time do we have to explore this privately-funded alternative?
So I don't know enough. I mean, Mr. Beer talked about that. I think what they concluded was there's a parallel path. The Harbor Commission said we need to approve this and keep going forward. There's no surety what Mr. Palmer's talking about tonight. Maybe there's some validity there. Maybe something can be done, if something can be made. I don't know. It would have its own permitting process and its own concerns. If he's talking about creating land or anything like that, there are challenges there, too.
Well, I trust Mr. Palmer and Mr. Beer, who I've known since before council. And I think we have a duty to at least explore the privately-funded alternative, albeit a parallel path. That's, that's, I wish we could have looked at it sooner. But the risk with not moving forward is that we don't get to, to dredge our harbor and the entire, the sea life in the entire harbor will suffer. And it just doesn't seem, doesn't seem prudent to walk away from these federal funds, and it doesn't seem like it makes much sense to ignore the EPA. What I'm wondering is, how do we, how would I make a motion that would approve this item, but would require that we, we take serious consideration for the privately-funded alternative, perhaps even comes back to us, so that no sub or vendor or staff that doesn't like the project isn't able to take away what could be a viable and more wise option?
Well, I think you'd have to take action to go ahead and approve the environmental document tonight. I guess you could supplement that with, you know, some type of consideration for, you know, other alternatives. There'd have to be significant environmental analysis of any other alternatives as well, because you'd have to go basically through the whole process if you're going to, you know, adopt some alternative that hadn't been considered. You have to go through and figure out what all the environmental impacts of that would be. So it's a little bit difficult to kind of line up a dual track like that. And they would be moving forward during that time period with this project. But it doesn't prohibit you eventually from considering other things. It's just, I'm saying, it's, it would take a while. It's not something that would happen, you know, very quickly.
As a state attorney, I want the process to go forward, but I would like my motion, if it's supported, to allow no wiggle room through, from staff, but this has to be explored and brought back to us. And if it's not feasible, it's not feasible, but...
Yeah, you could include that in your motion. So it'd be approving this. So this would be a kind of standalone item. You'd be approving this document. It'd be a standalone item. Then you'd have like a supplemental, you know, direction to staff. And if the council supports that, then, you know, staff would have to follow the direction of the council and bring it back to you.
And Mayor Moten, I just thought, because the Harbor Commission's already set up a subcommittee, and of course, staff reports to them, too, and they're report to you. Chair Kenny talked about tonight. There's two Harbor Commissioners that are actually following this and met with the group, and that might be a way, I mean, staff will be there to support them, but they're the ones that are going to make the decision and report to you. That's an independent body rather than staff. Just a thought.
Yeah, yeah, I think that'd be great. And there's, there's no offense meant to anyone who works for the city.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and it keeps a separation, and they're going to find things out, and sometimes...
What happens is, for those who don't know, you know, you do a majesty presentation, you get emotionally invested as a staff, and there's a way that things are perceived to be done. And sometimes, it's easy to just go with the path of least resistance, but I'm not interested in that. That's, so, so I like to make my motion in a way that acknowledges and passes a staff recommendation, but requires that during the process, the privately-funded alternative proposed this evening is adequately explored. It's reported to the Harbor Commission for their review and consideration, and it can be brought up to City Council if any council member decides they do not like the decision of the Harbor Commission.
Yeah, so I think, I'm just going to recap. So you're basically moving staff recommendation. You're going to ask the Harbor Commission to kind of work with the public to see if there's an alternative, and then bring that back to you with the recommendation? Does that, does that kind of summarize it?
The Harbor Commission would, of course, be transparent to the public, but they'd be working with the privately-funded alternative proponents.
Right, and ultimately come back with a recommendation to the council?
It, it could stay with Harbor Commission, and then we would have the option, like we would any other issue, to bring it up to the, to the dais if we...
So typically, they would make some type of recommendation at the end. If they're going to explore an issue like that, they'd come back with some type of recommendation to the City Council, as opposed to keeping it at their level, if you're going to send it down to them to take a look at?
Well, normally, they make decisions, and they can stay at that level, or we can decide to call it up, can we not?
But it'd typically be, so they're not really making a decision on anything. You know, they'd be exploring different alternatives potentially with private parties, ultimately to make some type of recommendation about it. But there wouldn't really be any decision to call it for review or to have appealed.
What do you recommend?
So my recommendation is move staff recommended, you know, move staff's recommendation, so that that process is moving forward, and that the council's in agreement with having the Harbor Commission look at other alternatives that are being presented when working with private parties, that they explore that and then come back to the City Council with some type of recommendation regarding those alternatives.
Yeah, and you say, you say alternatives plural. I get worried that if we have too many, it's going to slow down. You know, the way I view it, it's probably this private alternative or the staff recommendation. But I guess it makes sense to allow more than one in case someone else comes forward.
Alternative or alternatives, maybe?
Yeah. Okay, that's, that's my motion.
Do we have a second?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up on that, I'd be supportive if there is really a high sense of urgency to pursue the alternative. I mean, I'd like to know a little bit more how it's being pursued. Are we, is this generous resident bringing in the highest-level experts to really assess the viability of an alternative way to do this? I mean, I support going forward. I support Mr. Muldoon's motion, but I want to make sure that we're just not, let me put it positively, that we're seriously considering an alternative.
Maybe it'd be good to add some type of deadline to it, come back within 90 days, you know, or some, some type of timeframe. That way, it's relatively, relatively quick.
Is that realistic? Mr. Beer, would you mind coming up?
Yes, I can actually say at the last phone call that we had, which was just this past Friday with Team Lucky, they had indicated that they intended to come back with details on location. They're going to get some feedback on possible environmental impacts, what it might look like, so that they don't sort of go down a road with no return as well, and invest money that isn't going to result in something that, that we could bring forward. And they said they expected to have something back to me to present to the Commission by the next meeting in June. So I think they are diligently moving forward. We've had some pretty extensive discussion. I didn't get into any of the details of the different proposals. I didn't think that's appropriate. I would let them do that. But I can assure you that, that the Commission, myself, and Commissioner Yan, we're available and here to help and vet things out. And I've been working with Chris Miller, asking questions that come back through them. And, you know, it's, I'm excited to see if something else could, could work. I mean, let's, let's look at everything. And we've got a resident that's gracious enough to be investing into that cause is something that, you know, investing into that cause is something that, you know, we really need to appreciate and pursue, so I think you can be assured that that process will continue diligently.
So we don't need to say within 90, 60, 90 days?
I don't think that hurts, but I don't want to put anything upon them, you know...
Okay, now let's say, well, may I offer a friendly amendment to your motion, and I will second the motion, if we put it, within 90 days, we'd like to see the feasibility of an alternative way to dispose of this place.
Great.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I'll have it.
Let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. All right, moving on to current business, next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2021-12 eliminating the Balboa Village area benefit district.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Scott Catlett, your finance director, have a brief presentation for you, try to keep it short.
Nice job, Kevin.
So on April 27th, Councilmember O'Neill requested this item through the A1 process and the council approved to have staff take a look at it and bring back tonight's recommendations. With the implementation of the Balboa master plan now complete, there's about $396,000 a year of revenue that's currently being deposited into the district, and those funds are generated from the parking facilities that are located in Balboa Village. Back in 2012, the master plan was adopted, and then in 2014, this district was created, you can see there a listing of the eligible uses of the funds. With that ordinance in 2014, there was a companion resolution that directed the revenues there from the non-tidelands parking funds generated there in the district, and those monies were put in the general fund prior to that action. In addition to that, the BVAC was created at that time, and that committee provided advisory recommendations to the council about how to spend these funds, it was extended twice and ultimately expired in December of 2020. See here a listing of the places where the money's been spent in the past, we've spent about 1.1 million of the $2.4 million that's collected, that has been collected, I should say, since 2014, 15, and you can see that it was for the most part for some capital projects, there was also some maintenance funding included, which was done in 2018 and 2019, and I believe that those maintenance expenses since 2019 have been included in the public works budget in the general fund. And then there's two projects included in next year's CIP that we would propose to continue, you can see those there, one is the meeting improvements on Balboa Boulevard, which have been designed, and I believe we're going to move to construction soon, and then additional funding for the trolley project. There'll be $150,000, we estimate, left over after the dissolution of the district, should the council proceed this evening, and those funds would return to the general fund along with any savings from those two projects. If tonight's ordinance is approved, we'll come back for second reading in two weeks, and there'll be a companion resolution to redirect the funding, and as again, that'll generate about $400,000 a year that would go now to the general fund. With that, our recommendations are to consider the ordinance for first reading, and we'll be back in two weeks if approved, thank you.
Thank you, do we have any council comments, Ms. Dixon? Please do.
This item gives us a good opportunity to evaluate the importance of providing public infrastructure to enable our local businesses to operate in a clean and attractive environment, and is, Mr. Pope here, I have some slides that are going to run while I speak, just some background I'll provide, the federal government has identified Balboa Village as one of the several target areas for potential use of community development block grants, only in, the only one in the city of Newport Beach, this means that the area has a higher than average percentage of low and moderate income households than any other areas of the city, the city has in the past decades invested in the village by installing public improvements with CDBG funds to benefit residents and businesses in the area, CDBG funds cannot be used for maintenance, the underlying underperforming economic conditions of the area still exist. Maintenance of the existing enhanced improvement is vital to revitalizing the area consistent with the 2012 Balboa Village master plan, hence why it is important to continue the mission to maintain and enhance the maintenance of public spaces in Balboa Village with the use of the parking funds from the Palm Street parking lot. Why? Because Balboa Village is the oldest village in the city, over 110 years old, and the heartbeat of the original Newport, city of Newport Beach, the village is the iconic, the village is iconic, the pavilion's iconic image is seen on every piece of marketing literature for home sales and marketing opportunities for our businesses, from the port streets to Newport coast, it's the site of the Newport Harbor Pavilion, Balboa Pavilion. Economic revitalization, the self-financed pay-as-you-go via parking meter revenue from visitors and visitor impacts, keep the funds in the village to steadily repair and maintain to revitalize the area that receives the heaviest influx of visitors and is the source of more than $2.5 million in sales tax revenue, according to our finance director, that goes directly to the general fund, and attracts new investors like the new owner of the Balboa Village Theater, which is proceeding with plans to invest and operate the Balboa Village Theater, these are the, one critical anchor that has been identified by the master plan, and Ocean Quest, which is in a transition, we know right now, and these two projects, these two investor organizations would not be investing in Balboa Village if they didn't see that the city was caring for the quality and the maintenance of the community. Use of the parking revenues over the last five years, as directed by the master plan and the Balboa Village Advisory Committee formed from the master plan, has funded, as you saw in the list, facade improvements, streetscape, landscape improvements, and more, to enhance the neighborhood and to support public space improvement, property values, business values, and net revenues to the city. Combined totals of sales tax revenues generated in Balboa Village and parking meter revenues from Palm Street parking lot over this, over the last six, approximately six years, exceeds $12 million, a healthy return on investment of the $2.3 million invested in these programs from these revenue sources. In the resolution supporting the creation of the benefit district in 2015, the resolution reads in part, "The area benefit district reserve shall be used for the purposes of enhancing or supplementing services to the area benefit district in the form of streetscape improvements on public or private property, other beautification projects, including but not limited to commercial facade improvements, transit, pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, or wayfinding signage, the acquisition, leasing, or construction of additional parking, extraordinary maintenance programs for the public areas." Many of these, if not most all of these programs were concluded, and I commented publicly at the time when we sunsetted BVAC, the Balboa Village Advisory Committee, that this is an example of where staff and community work collaborated together to fulfill the mission that was created by the original master plan, however, there still is one key element that remains, and that is extraordinary maintenance. In reading the resolution again in preparation for this discussion, I was struck by the provision in the resolution for the, directed the use of the parking revenue funds in the benefit district for enhanced maintenance, extraordinary maintenance. I have appreciated the support of public works over the years to step up when requested, always, always step up, and perform the necessary enhanced maintenance requested, but was dismayed that these were always one-off projects because the specific maintenance was not sustained by a budget allocation, just as what we discussed earlier this evening on the beach improvement plan, and I am at a loss why the business owners, residents, and myself have consistently requested more maintenance, and we ran into budget constraints, and all along, the parking benefit included funds for enhanced maintenance. For this reason, I strongly support keeping the benefit district provision, but with some proposed modifications. With the beach service level review we heard early tonight, this is an ideal opportunity to identify the specific level of service we need to protect our quality, the quality of our beach communities. The enhanced and extraordinary maintenance specified in the original resolution sadly was never sustained. Our action tonight makes sustained maintenance possible and assures our private business interests and future and current investors in our villages and residents that the city is a partner in protecting property values and keeping our villages maintained to the standards once envisioned as Disneyland standards, and to encourage visitors to continue to enjoy the beauty of Newport Beach and enjoy our business offerings and not be turned off by the lack of maintenance that we know is prevalent. As you've seen in these pictures, there's current pictures that were just submitted to me today, yesterday, today, of current situation in Balboa Island, therefore, I move a substantive approach to rename the Balboa Village area benefit district and the benefit district reserve to the beach area benefit district and reserve, and expand the scope of the parking benefit district to include Balboa Village, Corona Del Mar, Ocean Avenue, and the business district to be edited further by Councilmember Brenner, and Balboa Island Marine Avenue and Boardwalk, both areas that need a lot of maintenance, these areas to restrict the funds for extraordinary maintenance for public areas, additional parking and parking management considerations, parking monitoring, and shared parking solutions, and transportation mobility strategies, I include that, that's in the current resolution from 2015, and Balboa Island and Corona Del Mar have been considering transit mobility strategies, so let's include them as well, and to be maintained in a special fund in the city treasury from 100% of the non-tideland revenues from the Washington Street, Palm Street parking lot, that's the existing parking lot, and the School Street parking lot, or the Delila, I guess, parking lot, how do you say, Dahlia, Dahlia parking lot, that's in Corona Del Mar, and there isn't, because there is no parking lot on Balboa Island, but to fold them in as well, because the need is there, to address the higher level of visitor impacts which affects these areas primarily. The direct nexus between use of parking revenues from visitors to reinvestment in the immediate areas affected by negative visitor impacts is logical and compelling and serves a vital public benefit. So those are my comments, and I hope we can discuss it, and I know we're going to hear if there's still a way from some of the residents and business owners in Balboa Village, so thank you, thank you, Mayor.
You, Mr. O'Neill.
That's an interesting idea. I think I'm going to steal Councilmember Muldoon's approach and actually start with a quote, which was Ronald Reagan's view on government's view of the economy, which is, "If it moves, tax it, if it keeps moving, regulate it, if it stops moving, subsidize it." Tonight, we're looking at a restricted fund for the last 10 years that's been dedicated to one area and one area only, and out of money that should have been rightfully general fund money. The fund has gone to fund 26 private businesses' facades and a sign that cost over $200,000, and despite this, these efforts, the anchor tenant left and recently sold the fund zone, and as I'm watching the pictures scrolling through, it appears that the city has not done what it probably should have been doing with that money for the last 10 years, because apparently, and according to the email responses I've received from the half dozen residents that emailed in, most of them just wanted to see better maintenance, they weren't asking for the trolley, they weren't asking for a sign, they weren't asking for just about anything, they just wanted to see maintenance, and it appeared, based on our conversations earlier, that the entire maintenance power washing that was required for the entire city is $260,000, and this is a $400-plus thousand restricted fund annually, but look, that's not really the core problem, the core problem is that this is just horrendous fiscal policy. Every parking lot and meter outside the tidelands area goes into the general fund except this one, so do property taxes from every area of the city, sales taxes from every area of the city, TOT from every area of the city, same for building permit fees, paramedic service fees, recreation fees, parking fines, rent from Beacon Bay or the Balboa Yacht Basin, or Lido House Hotel or city facilities, and all of these revenues come from very specific areas of our city, and some have impacts to very specific areas of our city too, and for very good reason, we don't put these into buckets to only benefit specific areas of our city, because frankly, that's just bad policy, it creates parochialism, which is exactly what just got described by trying to create a system where only three areas of our city are now benefited to the detriment of the entire rest of the city, it actually increases government, which I've always thought the city council tried to go the opposite direction, but it's actually increasing government, and it ignores the need to allow us to wrestle with issues annually on a short term and a long term basis, and in some years, we need to set aside more money into aging infrastructure on the island, sometimes on the peninsula or on the heights, sometimes we replace fire stations in Corona Del Mar using general fund money, and sometimes we replace fire stations on the peninsula using general fund money, or eventually, we're going to need to use general fund money to fund the police department rebuild, but restricted funds like this one take away competition and efficiency, so removing this restricted fund really does nothing more than force competition, it doesn't stop us from making the decision to have these enhanced maintenance efforts, if warranted, if justified, and if competed against with every other use of our general fund money, and so, given the fact that we all represent the entire city, which is the whole point of a district-based system that, where you have to run to represent the entire city, this is a very bad fiscal policy, it needs to go away, I'm going to move staff recommendation.
All right, do we have Mr. Blom?
Thank you, Mayor.
I do need a second, just in case.
Sorry.
Duffy's second. I just want to say a couple of things about this real quick, and as we, from, I'm going to speak from the business perspective right here, as we roll through those photos and we talk about 10 years of BVAC and dollars dedicated to a specific area, if I was running a business for 10 years and it still looked like that, I would think possibly I was not running my business properly, and perhaps that money is not being spent in the right way. Coming from not the political world, it is not the dais's job to prop up business, it's business owners seeing the viability in their own business and wanting to invest in those that make the difference. It's not government's job to save us, it's not government's job to build the neighborhood to make it better, it's our job as citizens and our job as business owners to do that. Newport is beautiful and amazing, not because this council made it that way, because the residents and the business owners of this city made it that way, and so, when we talk about the funds we use, and as I say on the finance committee for this exact reason, the funds are made for making the city better for everyone in the city, you know, and we talk about these parking lots, and I've heard the arguments on both sides, and you know, the number one argument I hear is that these are tourists coming here to utilize these areas. That's fine and dandy if you live on the peninsula, but if you live Spiglass Hill, you're not walking to the beach, you're getting in a car, driving with your family and taking your kids down to the beach, you're using those parking lots in the exact same way, and I agree with Diane that the amenities of these areas are very important to the whole of the city, they draw people here, but in that same breath, that's a responsibility of the city as a whole, it's not for cherry picking out that this is where this revenue needs to come from, and this is where that revenue needs to come from, it's at the same extent that I, I believe in the last 10 years, if we haven't turned this village and district around, I don't think using the parking funding to turn it around now is somehow going to miraculously do that, it's not going to miraculously make this a more viable option, we've seen the viable option, and it's taken years from this council to make that so, it's taken a California Coastal Commission decision to eliminate parking requirements down there that took us five, six years, I believe, right, from this council to make that happen, and we've seen that viable effort, you know, we've seen a new landowner take over the fund zone, I mean, I think that's, that's the first step in the right direction, and so, I'm always remiss when I sit up here to think that government can help business, it can't, business helps business, the viability of the businesses are what create more... The viability of the businesses are what create more viability for other businesses. We don't live off of the handouts of a diocese. We live off the ability to get people there. And sometimes that means spending the extra money for the businesses or the residents to take it into our own hands. And it's not just about looking for where we can spend city money, it's where we can spend our own money to show that we have pride of ownership in our city. And so, sometimes I really appreciate the angle and the constant throw out of, "This is how we support business in this city." But business supports the city. It's not the other way around. We're here to make this a better city. We're not here to look with our hands out to how the city helps us. The city is a viable option, and it's amazing, and it's great, but right now, we need private enterprise to fix Balboa Village. We don't need a parking fund to fix it. We need people to want to invest in it down there, and if the last 10 years and this hasn't proven that that's not a viable option, I don't think that the next 10 years will either. And so, you know, I agree that we need to improve the district, we need to up the cleaning, but I don't think that's an issue coming from the general fund and directing funding from that side, from the Finance Committee. I think that's just as viable of an option as saying that this money can only be used for this. There's lots of options for how we use our money, and I don't ever like to be hamstrung for where we get to spend funds. And I think that's true in anyone's P and L. We want to spend the funds where we need to, and sometimes those capital improvements take precedent. Sometimes cleaning and spending a quarter of a million dollars on power washing over the course of a year is a necessity for what we're going for. But I don't ever like separating funds because it only separates the ability we have to spend them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brenner.
I'm conflicted about this because I understand Diane's point about this is money that is raised in this district or in these districts along the coast that is being collected from this area, and we're not doing a good job of maintaining it. And it's like the chicken and the egg. Like, how are you going to stimulate economic development there if you have conditions like we've seen? There's just, it doesn't make sense. And I feel bad that because we've had this for a while and it's not been working, maybe we should have noticed a long time ago that these funds were not being spent as well as they should have been to really enhance this district. And I'm looking at Corona Del Mar and Balboa Island and Balboa Peninsula in terms of, how do we make this area pristine again? How do we do this right? Because we're not doing it right right now. It's not looking like it should, it's not looking like it used to, and I think we're seeing all of our beachfront communities are really suffering. So I could go either way on this, but I want some kind of assurance that we're going to do this right because we haven't done it right up until now. And, you know, it's the people on Spiglass Hill that are driving down there are benefiting from what we do down. It's not like they don't live there, but they benefit, and they bring their visitors to the coastal part of our community when they come here, and they want it to look nice. I don't think this is a division between Newport Coast and the beachfront properties because they want it to be nice for themselves and their families and their visitors as well. So how do we get this right? Because we're not doing it very well right now.
Ms. Dixon?
I just want to just add to Mr. Blom's comment. I totally agree, the business, we're not here to prop up any business, and I don't think any of this spending has propped up any individual business. This is, the city owns the sidewalks. The city owns the public space. It's the city's responsibility to maintain the public space, and that's what this is about. To require our business owners, this is an entirely new concept, to say, "You must steamwash your sidewalk." And they're paying their property taxes, and the city is encouraging the visitors to come to our community. They benefit from the visitors coming to our community, but we're saying, "Hands off, that's your responsibility to..." And then you could imagine the different standards of maintenance we would see if the city doesn't manage the maintenance. I totally agree with Councilmember Brenner, and that's what I was referring to. I think many, I will say, many of the projects that were completed were good projects. The landscaping, although they need to be maintained, this is a maintenance issue, the flowers are dying. But overall, the structural changes, the infrastructure improvements, the way sign, the wayfinding signage, all this was really needed, identified in the master plan and then executed by the Balboa Village Advisory Committee that was made up of entirely business owners and residents. So they all had an investment in improving their community. But maintenance has cost more, and for whatever reasons, the cost of it wasn't funded from this. It should have been. And so, the focus going forward is really to focus in a deliberate way. You could put a sunset clause on it. Let's get Balboa Village, Corona Del Mar, Balboa Island back up to snuff Disneyland standards in the next three years, and then we could sunset this. But let's clean up the city. We've got the money the city managers identified, $288,000. Let's pay for it from the existing funds, and let's have a commitment over the next three years to keep the city well-maintained. And if we can't do it, then we've got larger problems. I believe we can, but let's make a commitment to clean up the city. Now, if there are other parts of the city, if you want to clean up Newport Coast and your retail area up there, add it to the list. Let's identify, and this is not an exclusive list, let's identify the targeted areas in this city that need to be improved, in West Newport, in Newport Heights. Let's be specific about what needs to be maintained in the public space, on the sidewalks, on the streets, in the landscaping, and get it cleaned up. That's all I want to do, is clean up our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other council comment?
Yeah, I concur with all the comments here, really. Private investment is what makes this town sing. It's the, it's individuals coming in, seeing that there's real opportunity here, and they open a great restaurant. They open the Lido House Hotel. They build Newport Center, Newport Beach Country Club. These are some big places, but, and it just builds, and that's what we're doing. But we do it because we also, then our job is to provide the infrastructure, the public infrastructure. And I think we do that very well. But obviously, we, there's some improvements to be made in certain areas. I ran a business in the Balboa Village for five years, and I know how tough it is down there because it's a certain level of clientele that enjoys it. It's the Fun Zone and T-shirts and ice cream, and it's difficult for a business to hang tough. And I've seen that when they completely redid the Balboa Inn down there and did a really nice job, and it just slowly went south. So it's just difficult for many reasons. And, but we do need to maintain, our part of the bargain is to maintain all the infrastructure. And to Ms. Dixon's point, we, these places that are challenged, we just need to put more investment to it. But the, any organization, like a private club, they have, you have a pool, and you have tennis courts, and you've got whatever you're doing. You can't section that off and divide the membership and say, "Well, you guys put in for the tennis court, and you guys put in for the pool," and it just doesn't work. We're all in this together, and so to segregate out funds, I don't think's the answer to the Balboa's issues. I think they're more ingrained than that. But certainly, the beach areas, as we've discussed, need more help, and I think we'll learn a lot this summer, and we'll see what, how we do. But the intensity of uses, as we all know, is really, really tough, and so we need to do what we can and be flexible enough to throw more resources at it when we see things not up to par. So I think we're all pretty much in agreement. Huh? Oh, I do. Philosophically.
Yeah, we'll see. Let's go, I'd like to see the vote and see if we all agree.
Yep. Anybody want to comment on this?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Tomorrow afternoon, I have the distinct pleasure of meeting with the new owners of the Fun Zone. And as many of you know, these are longtime citizens of the city who are buying this iconic part of our beach infrastructure. By the way, I need to say, I guess, for the record, I'm Gary Sherwin, President and CEO of Newport Beach and Company. My understanding is that they have pledged to preserve and enhance this really important part of our historic culture in the, culture in the city. Their identities will be announced soon, and I will allow them time to do that. But in the meantime, we owe them a great deal of thanks. The Fun Zone is the heart and soul of our city in so many ways, and the city's business culture, of which I've been a part of now for more than 15 years, has always been about building a public-private cooperative relationship. That is really, frankly, I think what distinguishes this city, is that unique collaboration between private interests and the public interest. And there is no question that the Fun Zone needs a lot of help. I don't, I think there's consensus that the Fun Zone does not meet all of, any of our standards for what that experience really needs to be. With this private sector investment, we also need the city to do its part to keep the Balboa Village clean, safe, attractive to visitors, and potential merchants, as well as the existing ones that are sticking it out. I think Councilperson Dixon has said that our goal should be keeping the village as clean and as beautiful, as engaging as a stroll down Main Street in Disneyland. And that's a tall order, but I heartily applaud it. I think it's an excellent one. We're Newport Beach, why shouldn't we set high standards? When people come to Newport Beach, they have heightened expectations of their experience here, throughout the city. We're an exceptional city in so many ways, and people come expecting that heightened experience. By investing in programs that deliver on those expectations, we make us not only more competitive, but also attractive to new investment. Let's capitalize on the generosity of our new investment in Balboa Village, the people who want to preserve our legacy, to make the Fun Zone more enticing. Let's keep this vital part of our history alive by improving its safety, cleanliness, and infrastructure, and continuing the city's public investment income that we receive from our visitors. The proposal, by the way, tonight, to expand this effort to benefit other beach communities and areas within the city to improve that experience, I would heartily endorse. I believe the visitor industry would as well. It's important to keep all the areas clean. The Fun Zone, the Village, needs a lot of attention, but so do other areas in the city as well, and we really acknowledge that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, you mind if I ask one quick question of our Tourism Bureau? How much of the 18% we're giving out of TOT are you going to invest into these areas?
Well, in fact, we're going to try to invest, set aside a special marketing fund just to support Balboa Village.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I don't mean marketing. I mean, if you believe that the tourism industry would endorse the idea of having funds that go directly into the experience that we have in the Fun Zone, I'm asking, are you willing tonight to commit a certain amount of money, you know, six figures even, that you're hearing to, in order to make sure that the cleanliness standards that you're talking about are there? Because then we wouldn't even have to worry about what we're talking about tonight. Otherwise, Mr. Sherwin, I'm kind of curious why you're here on behalf of our tourism industry to advocate on the basis of a restricted fund discussion. So if you could answer that, that'd be great.
Well, my interests rely in improving that experience, and that's really what the city's responsibility is. We're not infrastructure people, we're marketing people. We know what brings people to areas, we know what makes those areas successful, we know why people want to visit those areas. Our job is to get them to those areas. But if the areas aren't clean, safe, and well-maintained, then that makes our job a little bit more difficult. So in concept, we're here to support the idea of building a better experience. That's all we're here to do.
All right.
And the rest of it is about marketing. That's the space we like to occupy.
Okay. So I take that as zero. So I appreciate that.
Yep.
Like, I don't even know where to begin, but I'm Kelly Carlson. I'm the President of the Balboa Village Merchants Association. My husband and I own two very successful businesses in Balboa Village, and we own a duplex right outside of Balboa Village. We actually get to look at the Balboa Village sign, which, when we bought the duplex, I often laughed that it's sweet justice that I'm probably going to be looking at this sign for the rest of my life. Because I'll go on record as saying, even I'm not a huge fan of the sign. But I'm here tonight to offer, I guess, the business perspective, probably even a resident perspective, and honestly, a very successful Balboa Village business. Our storefront looks awesome. People walk into our store and they love it. We offer activities that people love and are constantly commenting how great of a business we run. But I look around me, and there is a mess. And I think, as I'm listening to all of you, what I'm hearing is everyone agrees that the level of service and what Balboa Village looks like needs to be better. But how do we get there? I met the potential new owner of the Fun Zone yesterday, and I'm ecstatic. I think that the chances we might finally have found a way to bring that block back up to what it was when I was a kid. The Balboa Theater has been years of waiting, when is this going to happen? But these are two property owners. Can we put the stake of the entire community on just those two property owners? And in the great scheme of things, I agree with what you're saying and with what you're saying. I like, fiscally, when I listen to you guys, I'm like, "Yeah, I totally agree with you." But then when I look at what's going on in Balboa Village, I see a problem. And in five years and in 10 years, I don't want to look back to this and know that the problem is because we didn't invest in it. Balboa Village isn't going anywhere. And in a perfect free trade world where there was no Coastal Commission and there was no state guidelines telling us that this little community has to be a commercial district, I bet you it wouldn't be there. It would be a bunch of beautiful homes worth millions and billions of dollars. But it's not going to get rezoned. It's going to stay a commercial district. And it's become seedy, well, it's always been seedy, and it's always gone through waves. I can tell you that five years ago, there were multiple business owners living in their business. Even till today, we still have business owners that employ the homeless and pay them disgusting amounts of money for what they make these people do for them. We had, and we don't right now, but there has been plenty of times where we had businesses that were selling drugs. My husband and I's bike store that we have and went in, and honestly, we don't even make that much money off of it, but we love the area, so we do it, had just that thing. There was a guy selling drugs out of that shop. There isn't anymore because we took the passion to fix it. So I don't have the answers, but I'm telling you, there's a problem. And if we don't find a solution, it'll continue to be a problem. Thank you.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First, I agree wholeheartedly with Councilmember O'Neill's premise that restricting funds from specific revenue sources is inherently bad policy and creates inherent inequities
in the use of public money. I also wanted to point out, because I don't think it's been mentioned, that I believe the city had a number of Parking Benefit Districts before this one, and the other ones were abolished or repealed at the time this one was created. I'm not sure what happened to the funds from them. I did not understand the logic of why one was good and the others were not needed anymore. And I hope I got that accurate because I think it's important for all of us to try to be accurate in our comments. And so I wanted to suggest two corrections. One, to the best of my knowledge, Balboa is not the oldest part of Newport Beach. And number two, although the city does own many of the sidewalks that it pays to clean... And number two, although the city does own many of the sidewalks that it pays to clean, I do not believe the big sidewalk, boardwalk in front of the former Fun Zone is owned by the city, yet the city does clean it for its owners. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Do we have any Zoom calls? Further counsel comment?
I'd like to ask, Will, how, how are we going to resolve this? If we don't have a special fund that this maintenance comes from, do you think it's going to be better? Do you think we're going to find a way to improve the conditions in our most heavily accessed neighborhoods? How are we going to? My concern is the end result.
File.
My concern is the end result.
All right, I'm going to look for the red dot, so let's see if I can hold it up to the camera properly. We had a study session where we were talking about using general fund money, $229,000 on an annual base cost, plus $32,000 of annual supplemental on public sidewalks, plazas, and area pressure washing. This is all, this is all coming out of the general fund. This is all discussed during our budget process. This is all discussed as part of an overall strategy, because that's exactly what you do. You don't set up special funds, you don't set up these, these special districts, because at some point, you start setting up so many special districts, including, you know, every other, that's, you eventually just call it the general fund.
Yeah.
Right? That's the point. So, so the end result is whatever we want it to be, because that's what we do when we're making budget decisions out of the general fund. There's no reason to have a special fund, apparently. We've had one for 10 years, and it's failed. Right? So why would we continue to do that on top of the fact that it's just bad fiscal policy? So you're, you're asking two different questions. One is, is this good fiscal policy? I've made a motion to get rid of it, because it's not. And the second is about a more broad policy discussion about, you know, what to do with your, the general fund money, and that's part of the budget process, and that's not in front of us tonight.
I don't think you answered my question, but...
No, I'm saying the end result is some, is part of our discussion, is part of the budget.
I understand all of that, but I'm just saying, as, as pragmatically, how do we ensure that this is going to be done? We went through a process to do that. How are we going to, do we, as a council, take a position that this is a top priority for us?
Every, every time we make a budget decision, we decide what's a priority for us. I'm not, I don't understand the question, because that's, every time we decide how many police officers we're going to have, that's a top priority. Every time we decide how many fire trucks we're going to have, it's a top priority, because we're deciding that in our budget. Every, every budget decision you make is a priority, that's the whole point of it. And if you're going to take priorities away and put them into special areas, so that you can't have discussions about what should go into Coron del Mar, Newport Coast, or the Heights, or any other part of the city, it's bad fiscal policy. That's the whole point of getting rid of this. It's not that you, we can't, we can't keep investing the money, but I've found that competition breeds, breeds efficiency, and lack of competition breeds inefficiency, and we're clearly seeing that.
I wasn't challenging you, I was just asking how we get to that end result.
No, and I'm, I don't view it as a challenge. I'm actually trying to answer the question, because I'm trying to get to the understanding, but I'm saying, this is how budgeting works, and that's why you have a general fund, so that you can have all of these debates, because the same dollar you're, we would contemplate spending on power washing is a dollar that's not being spent somewhere else. It's not, it's a dollar not being spent on police overtime, it's a dollar not being spent on fire overtime, or lifeguards, or anything else. That's the whole point of trying to figure out priorities. But restricted fund is a bad idea.
Dixon.
I, I guess I'm confused, because I don't, I'm not aware of any part of the city that's not being addressed. I mean, it hasn't surfaced in this discussion this evening, that's not being addressed with a special need. If the Police Department wanted an additional person, officer, they would have had that in the proposal. What has happened is that Balboa Village and perhaps the other cities, we're talking about the maintenance of our city. That is our responsibility, that is the city's responsibility. I'll take exception that the Balboa Village Advisory Committee did not fail, and that they were diligent, the community members, as well as staff, were diligent in fulfilling the mandate of prior councils to implement a master plan for Balboa Village. As I stated earlier, wayfinding signage, landscape improvements, and the maintenance was not done. I mean, I, I exposed that tonight, we've just not done it. So what is, what is bad policy? I don't accept bad policy. There are, we have reserve funds for special projects throughout the city budget, but this is unique as a part, that's why it's been created, Parking Benefit District, to benefit a targeted area that is underserved, and to ensure that it rises to the level of service that we demand in this city. It has not happened on its own, even because maintenance was not presented as an enhanced or extraordinary item, even though the funds were sitting there. So we have to, my belief, my opinion, is to bring this forward as a targeted area, as I said earlier, for a limited period of time. Let's make sure we're investing the funds necessary to enhance our city. Laguna Beach, just, the beach improvement plan, frankly, just, the idea came to Ms. Brenner and myself, because Laguna Beach City Council just passed over a million dollars to take their parking district revenues and, and invest in their high-impact visitor areas. And that's what cities do when there is a need to repair or fix a problem. And we've heard from our business owners, and I know there's another business owner, resident, who wants to speak, so he was waiting, but he wasn't, I don't know, maybe the number didn't connect correctly, but he was waiting. I don't know why this is such a hurdle to overcome, when we know we want to invest in our community and support our infrastructure, and have a limited emphasis on funds directed, or I could say this, don't have the, perhaps don't have the benefit fund of the parking revenues, but just take those same funds and identify the areas of the city that need these enhanced areas of improvement and the maintenance. And I think the plan that Ms. Yellen presented today was good, but I don't even think it does, could do more to enhance areas. I'm not being critical, I'm grateful for that. I'm just passionate about improving the maintenance of our communities that experiences heavy impacts from visitors. The 10-plus million visitors we have in this city sadly create messes, whether they're ice cream cones or milk duds, they're creating messes. And it could be residents, but it's largely 10 million visitors, 250,000 of them come to the Balboa Peninsula on any summer weekend. So there need, it stands to reason that we need to enhance the opportunities to keep our city clean. They're not going to Newport Coast, they're not going to Newport Heights, they're going to Balboa Peninsula. Why, why do we ignore that fact? We don't treat it to require the exceptional maintenance that it requires. That's all this is about, to recognize the impacts in our community from visitors. We want the visitors, as Mr. Sherwin said, that visitors are good. We bring in over $3 million of sales tax in, in that geo area of Balboa Village alone. So they're producing, but let's support them. And let's make sure more visitors come and enjoy the beautiful Newport Beach. That's all I'm saying. I just prefer to have an allocation of funds so we can get the city cleaned up. Thank you.
If something else, Mr. O'Neill?
Yeah, I, I think we should vote.
I agree completely. Okay. There is? Yes.
Hello?
Hello, please go ahead.
Hi, I saw there were some technical problems there. My name is Mike Brock. I am a Newport Beach resident. I have written the council letters this week. I have just recently been made aware of this issue. I want to be clear that I'm not a merchant of Balboa Village, nor was I ever on the Advisory Committee. From my perspective, and I've talked to a number of the residents and some of the merchant owners as well, the feeling is that prior to 2015, when this funding took place, the Village was in complete disarray. But over the last six years of this funding, there has been great progress. All, I don't want to go through all the things already mentioned about signage and everything, but there's been great progress. But the concern today is about maintenance. And the concern is that, that there's going to be the same neglect that took place before this funding took place prior to 2015. So that despite the fact that maybe the decisions that were made during this period could have been better, my recommendation in my note to the council was, then let's fix the governance. Let's find a better way to report the progress, let's find a better way to show the results of the work that's being done or not being done. But the concern of the residents and the concern of the merchants is if the funding moves back to the general fund, and does have to compete against literally hundreds of other projects within the city, that this area will not get the attention that it, that it needs. And I don't think we are at all talking about propping business up, we're talking about the city doing its part to take care of the property it owns. I was just there tonight, I've been in Northern California, just drove in today, went to my favorite taco place, Great Mix to Get Tacos. The Fun Zone, the parking lots, the streets were packed. It is vibrant, there's lots of good things happening. The concern is if we start to back away from a city perspective, and this gets lost in the shuffle with hundreds of other projects. Now, is there any, some evidence of this? We think there is. The Balboa Advisory Committee was sunsetted last December. The merchants told me they were promised quarterly meetings to discuss maintenance issues, where at the end of May, they've told me that that hasn't happened. And now we're talking about moving the money to the general fund. So that's our concern, is that there's progress being made, we think there's good things happening. There's a philosophical debate here about the restricted funds issue, but I don't think it's, it's an answer or a problem. You can manage it either way, as long as you have proper governance in place. The local residents would respect and appreciate the council backing up its decision from 2015 and sticking with the benefit district funding. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Set the vote?
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2021-12, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, amending section point 12, point 44.029, area benefit district reserve of chapter 12, point 44, stopping standing and parking restrictions of title 12, vehicles and traffic of the Newport Beach Municipal Code, to eliminate the Balboa Village area benefit district, with council members Dixon and Brenner voting no. The motion carries 5-2.
All right, next item is our coronavirus update.
Well, given the lateness of the hour, I, I actually don't have a lot to update at any rate on this one.
Thank you for that.
We're in the yellow, yellow tier, we continue to be, and we're looking at the June 15th deadline, so.
All right.
I don't think there's much further to go on.
Then we'll move to the review of the proposed fiscal year 2021-22 Capital Improvement Program budget. Best for last.
Welcome back again, Dave Webb. Mayor, council, given the hour, we have a report in this, we've done a lot of talk on CIP, and you have budgets.
Just real quick, we need to announce our conflicts before we get rolling, just real quick.
We'll start with that.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Brenner, do you have any conflicts?
I have a real property interest in the project of Grant Hald Park improvements.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Nope.
Dixon?
Mr. Harp, what is my conflict?
Just landscape enhancements, potentially for Lido Isle.
Okay.
Councilmember Blonk?
I have real property interest for the Balboa Island Drainage Project, I have real property interest for the Landscape Enhancement Project, I have real property interest for the Marine Avenue Reconstruction Project, I have real property interest for the micro transit for Balboa Island and Coron del Mar, and I have a real property interest for the undergrounding of AD11.
Councilmember Duffy? Mayor Proten?
I have so many, I'm just going to go in the back. I'm not even joking, I'm looking at like a dozen here. I'd like to go home, but unfortunately, we're going to have to go over this item. So if you wanted to read them out, Ms. Harp, you can, and I'm just going to go back into the closed session.
Okay. Give me just a moment, I'll pull them up.
In the meantime, I'll announce my conflicts with the Balboa Peninsula Crosswalks improvements and the Ocean Boardwalk and Parking Lot improvements due to real property interest conflicts.
Okay.
I had a summary of them, but let me, let me just flip to the original analysis. Okay, so these are all business conflicts for Councilor, or Mayor Protimoldune, so Fire Station Number Two, Alley's Reconstruction, Streetlight Rehabilitation Program, Marine Avenue Reconstruction, East Bluff Drive pavement rehabilitation, Culver Drive, Anita Can Drive, Traffic Single Synchronization, MacArthur Boulevard RTSSP, Traffic Single Road Rehabilitation Program, if I can speak, all the undergrounding districts, Advanced Metering Infrastructure, and Rule 20A. And that, that's all of them.
I think we're clear to go.
Okay, well, we have a presentation for you, we'll keep it brief. I think what we can do is, I'll have Mr. Houlihan just roll through them, because you've seen most of these projects. If you want to talk about any particular one, we will, and we'll make sure there's a conflict check on any particular project. But I don't think anything's a surprise, because you've already seen the budget and the printed copy. So let me turn it over, Jim, if you want to roll through it.
All right. Jim Houlihan, City Engineer, Deputy Public Works Director. So we'll roll right into it. The Capital Improvement Program basically sets our priorities and appropriates the funds, provides the basis of the project planning, and develops and constructs identified public improvements, addresses significant maintenance projects, and responds to changing priorities and conditions throughout the city. To recap from last year, or this current year we're in, we completed 28 capital projects, will be completed through June 30th this year. Total value, $38 million. And below is listed seven projects that account for about $11 million that will be completed in this calendar year. The list of the 28 projects are listed here, I can't go through any of those specifically, unless you want to talk about any. And projects that are currently in construction are listed here with the estimated completion Projects, major projects in design, a pretty good list here. We'll go through some of these individually when I get to them. And then, in all, we have 87 projects or programs in our CIP going forward for the next fiscal year. $74.8 million, and broken up into the new funding and rebudgets. To note, those are seven projects that make up about 60%, little over 60% of our rebudgets. Again, this, this is an investment in our public infrastructure, and we take care of all those items listed there. And, and going through each division of our CIP, this is the Facilities Section, $4.7 million budgeted, and the list of projects here. Streets and Drainage, one of our larger divisions, $22.3 million. Large list of projects, if there's anything specific you want to hit on. And then Transportation, we have approximately $3.6 million budgeted with these projects. And then transportation, we have approximately $3.6 million budgeted with these projects. And Parks, Harbors, and Beaches, another large division with $23 million of budget. And our water quality and environmental, about $2.5 million with these three, or these three projects here. And our water system, approximately $8 million in projects. Waste water system. And then our other projects, approximately $9.6 million of budget, these projects and the underground districts. So a breakdown of the projects is located here, again, approximately 60% of our CIP is located in our street and drainage and our parks, harbors, and beaches. And the breakdown of funding is shown here. The general fund, the FFP, Thailand's Capital, and our water fund, those four funds fund about 60% also of our CIP projects. And with that, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer any.
And I'll just point out, you've all received this capital project, this is the report that has the year that Jim just went through, it also has the next five years of planning, and it's also available online for the public to look at as a, any other comments on that. So at this point, we take any comments or questions or items you have on?
Mr. O'Neil?
Yeah, my only very, very brief comment is, two of the facilities that are potentially coming up are the Library Lecture Hall and the Junior Guard Building. To the extent that the federal guidelines end up allowing us to use the money that we're receiving, I'd very much like to see us setting aside those funds to eventually build, have this, be the city's contribution on that. So, well, let's just make sure we're taking a look at the guidelines with that in mind. Thanks.
Any other council comments?
Could you bring back this slide that shows the source of funds?
Oh, I think I lost my, that one right there.
Where do you, well, basically what the point I want to make, I like to make this point every year, is the actual general fund funding of our capital projects is, what's that number?
14% is the, all of kind of, about $10 million.
10? Is that what you said?
10.5.
If I'm reading right, 10.5.
14%.
So the point, just to educate everyone who's listening at this hour, is that the total budget capital spending is, what, 78, 74 million? Because our staff, our public work staff and others perhaps, are aggressive in going after external fund sources, whether those are state or federal or county grants like Mezuram, of course, but that is what funds, so those are, that's what funds our capital projects, that's our taxpayer money coming back to help our city. And it's only because our staff goes after all that money and brings it back to our city. And our general fund is only supporting about $10 million of it. So I commend our staff, and I, they, they work, I mean, filling out all those grant applications and then the performance requirements, it's, it's our full-time jobs, I get that, but they pay for themselves. I just want to thank staff for the fine work that you do to get this money back to our city, to fund our important capital projects. So thank you.
Any public comment on this item?
Mayor Avery and members of the council, my name, McKinnis, Jim Mosher. I just had one comment that's kind of related to that last one about the source of the funds. In looking at the printed CIP budget book online in a PDF form, I was interested in the source of funds, and a lot of things, it said the source of fund was going to be contributions, and I was a little confused by that. And I think other members of the public, reading the budget book, would be confused if they looked at that, because it sounds like contributions is like people are donating money to the city. And it's, as indicated on this pie chart, sometimes it's actually a government grant, which is quite different than a private donor. And so when you look through the CIP budget book, you see like the Library Lecture Hall, it says $4 million of contributions, and you look at the trash wheel, and it says maybe $1 million of contributions. It would be good to distinguish which of those are actually private gifts or donations from the ones that are government grants. So perhaps we should not lump everything and call it all contributions and make a distinction, because the public is probably wondering who these generous benefactors are, they're making all of these contributions. So perhaps it should be two categories instead of one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Do we have anything on Zoom? We have one.
Good evening again, this is Hua Yan. So I first want to give a compliment, I tried to reach the numbers online, and there's a quite fancy interactive system. I actually was confused, how do you do that, reach the numbers more effectively, but I definitely should thank the city for keep exploring technology. I have a quick question on the trash well, so it's rebudgeted, it's $1.4 million now, so I wonder how this number came up to be 1.4. My knowledge is definitely not complete, I know we got a grant, 1.68 million from Ocean Protection Council, and the council more recently added a quarter million there, so that'd be about almost $2 million. So I wonder how is this $1.4 million came out with. Thank you.
Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, so this past year, we received a grant from OCTA, it's a water quality grant of a half a million dollars that was added into this budget. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
So, yeah, I was just going to say, Mayor, that it was, that's just a study session item, so at this point, it'll come back for the next council meeting for adoption. Thank you.
So next on the agenda is motions for consideration. Madam Clerk?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council, either this meeting or the previous meeting may be, may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider from the last meeting, May 11th, item number seven. I was on Zoom, and so I think it was noted that it was hard to hear, and so there was a second, the first vote on the motion to disestablish the Newport Beach restaurant bid, I voted no. I think the vote was two against, four yes, and one recused. What does one mean, abstain or recuse? It was recused.
So, I think maybe, are you going to deal with this item, are you going to make a motion for reconsideration?
Yes.
So, Councilmember Blom should recuse himself.
All right, so then there was a second vote at your behest, Mr. Harp, to, because the item failed 2 for 1, it would be appropriate for the city to direct city staff to bring back the resolution of intention to disestablish the Newport Beach Restaurant Association Business Improvement District and fix the time of a public hearing. I could not hear very well, and I honestly don't know why I would have voted yes for that since I had just voted no, so I went to reconsider my vote and record a no vote on that second part of item seven.
If that's acceptable to the rest of the council, would we just change the minutes? So it wouldn't be a motion for reconsideration, it would just be changing your vote to a no vote?
Unless there's, I guess, somebody else wants to reconsider it.
Well, no, what you're asking for is to modify the minutes to reflect a no vote. Typically, we only allow, according to the council policy, you can only basically make a change like immediately after the vote, once you recognize that it was done in error. But I think, given that you were on Zoom and it was hard to hear, I don't know if the rest of the council would be opposed to letting Councilmember Dixon change her vote in the minutes to no on the second part for disestablishment?
All right.
Is everyone fine with that?
I.
So maybe just a quick motion to amend the minutes?
Could you wait till I, because I have a comment also?
Okay.
Because, as you remember, that was an extremely confusing evening, and some of us didn't even know what we were voting on half the time, and there was no discussion of the item, and I also did not recognize that I was voting to dissolve. And so I also would like to request that that be brought back. A motion for reconsideration means that you bring it back to reconsider, right?
So we're going to bring back, just so everyone knows, there's nothing that's happened so far that would actually go to disestablish the restaurant bid. What would come back is a resolution to set a time in public hearing for consideration of the disestablishment. So basically, all I was asking is, does the council want to go down that path of bringing it back? But nothing happens until you take action on that resolution. So everybody will get a chance to talk about disestablishment when we bring the resolution back. So I don't really think you really needed a motion for reconsideration.
So we can do no votes, though, we could...
Well, if you want to change the minutes, if you want to change the minutes for what happened at the last meeting, that's something different than a motion for consideration. Are you asking to have your vote reflected differently in the minutes?
Yes.
Because you were confused by it?
Absolutely.
So does anyone else on the council have an issue?
I'm sorry, that's, that's not what the minutes reflect. The minutes reflect a consent calendar item where four council members voted no. It doesn't reflect that anyone voted yes to bring it back.
No, four voted yes.
It reflects that...
Hang on, sorry. Hang on, I'm looking at it right now, and that's why it's worth notice, noting that this was a consent calendar item. So four council members specifically voted no. Neither Councilmember Brenner nor Councilmember Dixon were part of those no votes. They were part of the two yes votes. And so because it was on consent calendar, it's properly noted here. The only thing that is in the minutes is that you, Mr. Harp, noted that because it had failed by a two to four to one vote, it would be appropriate to bring it back. There was no vote on the appropriateness of bringing it back. That was simply a note that you had made. Our vote was, there was simply a registered no vote by four council members on a consent calendar item, and then as an omnibus, we voted on the consent calendar. It is not the same as saying that four of us voted to bring back the disestablishment. That is just simply the natural legal progression of what would, of what happened in that consent calendar vote. So there's nothing to change in the minutes, because it's adequately reflected that both Ms. Brenner and Ms. Dixon voted to, voted with the minority side, but did vote in favor of item seven, whereas four of us voted no.
Well, it says amended motion carried unanimously. What does that mean?
That's the, the amended motion is simply the...
I don't remember even voting on this second amended motion. Was there a second amended motion?
We were voting on the consent calendar at that point in time.
Yes, for the amended?
Yes.
Yeah, so...
I don't understand why we'd have to vote on that, Mr. Harp, because that's, that's the natural legal progression of what we had done. It's not the legal progression.
No, you could leave the, you could just leave it in place and not have brought it back for disestablishment. So now I'm seeing it in the minutes. So what she has reflected in the minutes is that everyone voted to bring back for disestablishment, but you don't have to do that, you could leave it there with no plan approved, without disestablishing it.
Okay, I understood that that, that to be part of, I did understand that to be part of what we were doing, but I didn't understand it that we would need to vote on it. But to the extent that we did, then you have four people who are willing to do it and two saying they don't, so you could, we could just, if that's what you're saying, we can reflect that in the minutes.
I think it'd be clearer to have it that way if they didn't intend to vote for that, because, because the impression, at least from what I read from the city clerk's minutes, was that it was four to two on the main motion to, you know, dealing with the item that was on the agenda, but on the disestablishment, everybody voted for bringing that back as the next step. But we could reflect that as four to two on everything if the council's okay with that.
I moved to, I moved to modify the minutes to reflect the no votes by Ms. Brenner and Ms. Dixon.
And I apologize for any confusion on that.
All right, that's good. Thank you.
That's my fault. Or it's LaLanne's fault, how is it, it's LaLanne's fault? All right.
I seconded that.
Do we have?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, is everyone, maybe just raise your hands, just change the minutes.
Just change the minutes.
It's 6-0 unanimous.
We have, are we adjourned anyone's memory?
Nope.
It's my birthday in 45 minutes, I'm going to do a TikTok video, see everyone on the streets.
All right. See you in Huntington Beach.
Yeah.
We're adjourned.